Good evening. We've got a big agenda, so bear with me. First, we're gonna have the minutes. Anybody have any changes on the minutes last minute? Paul?
No.
Okay. Got a motion?
I move we accept the minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is a meeting for next month. We always run into this problem. October 9th is Columbus Day, so we gotta change it. So...
It's Columbus Day.
Columbus Day. So we can change it to Monday, October 2nd, or we can go later on till the 23rd. 23rd is kinda late. I'm looking for the 2nd. Anybody have any objections to Monday, the 2nd? Huh?
Not sure.
You good? Okay. Alright, so the meeting will be Monday, October 2nd instead of the 9th. Okay. Next order of business is gonna do, uh, we did that, the meeting. I got a letter from Joel Cooper, Esquire, retired, 120 Rock Road Road. I think everybody's got a copy of it. I suggest you read it. Not now, I mean, when you get a chance, read it. It has a lot of good information there concerning cell towers.
Is that, um...
It's in your package somewhere. It's not included in the, uh, it's not required reading. It's something that was given to us.
I don't think I have it.
It's in the packet that you just gave it.
Okay?
Okay. Alright, so first one I'm gonna do is, uh, residential for extended two cell towers. Uh, first thing I'm gonna do, uh, 1657 Route 9D land variance. Mr. Watson, why do you tell us what you're requesting here?
Thank you.
Good evening, Glenn and Watson for 1657 LLC. We currently have a site plan on behalf of the, of the LLC for approval of a new residence. Actually, it's a addition to an old residence on Route 9D. This property that you're looking at, and you have the display boards on your desk. It's about 35 acres. It's on Route 9D. It's exactly opposite the Manitou School, the old plum bush. It's the former Patterson property. There's a, there's an Italianate building there that's going into disrepair. It's being restored, and the applicant is seeking a site plan approval from the planning board to make a fairly large addition to this property, which includes an underground garage. The, how, the new building will work to the north and to the northeast. Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna correct myself, to the north and northwest, northwest, and then the north, ending in a garage that's going to be mostly underground. The only exposed, um, part of the garage will be the northwest face where the garage doors are. The rest will be underground and We discovered that buried in the, um, buried in the regulations, and we cited in the application, is that there's a, in Phillips Town, the biggest garage one may have is 1,000 square feet. Um, that's 30 by 30. By today's standards, especially on a large piece of property, that's not a very big garage. It'll accommodate two. I don't think it'll accommodate three. Maybe if you stretched it a little bit the other way. Um, so we're seeking a relief so that we can have a garage that's slightly bigger, and frankly, I didn't expect to go first, so we didn't check my notes onto how big, but it's, it's bigger. We could, we could fool around, make a part of it a tool shed and part of, you know, a work, workbench room. We don't wanna do that. We have a garage that's bigger. We're seeking a variance in that regard. We have, as, as you can see, as you look at the display, it's in the middle of a very large piece of property. The closest boundary is 428 feet away, and we're seeking, we're seeking relief on that, that point.
Okay, you're looking for a 2,120 square foot section?
Right.
Instead of 1,000. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, that's, that's, that's...
That's my whole story. I think we're looking for a completeness review tonight, and...
And you have to go back to the, you have to go back to the planning board.
We have to go back to the planning board, and we can't go back there unless we have a variance, or we reduce the size of garage.
Okay. Well, I reviewed the application. I found that everything is required to be in here, is in here. Does anybody have any questions on this? Let's leave four, we set up for a public hearing. Alright, we'll set up for a public hearing, then it'll be for, uh, now, uh, application complete. Let me take a vote, the application complete? Agree?
Aye.
Agree?
Agree.
Okay, the application's complete. Uh, the public hearing will be October 2nd.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I think you're up again. Essex Green?
I gotta come up.
Essex Green, right?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Good evening. How are you, members of the board? My name is Dan Richmond. I'm with the law firm of Zarin and Staimans with Glennon Watson on behalf of the applicant Susan Green and Dana Simmons of Essex Green.
Do I hand those up?
Turn that away from them. Okay. We are here also this evening for a completeness review. Um, we are, look forward to schedule a public hearing, which will give a more detailed presentation. You may recall this project is a single-family residential home in keeping with the neighborhood. It is separated, it is bifurcated by municipal boundary. After some appearing before your board, we also appealed before the Village of Nelsonville ZBA, and following discussions with your council and council for the Nelsonville ZBA, it was determined that it would be wise for us to locate the house entirely within the town. So we have now gone before, made an application to your building inspector, who did confirm that we are non, this is a non-conforming lot. Um, he determined that we would need a front yard variance because sent, by his calculation, he calculates strictly from the town line. Um, we are basically zero feet from the town line, although in reality, we're much further from both Douglas Lane and the most proximate road Moffett Road.
Right.
Um, in terms of the rear yard, again, um, he determined that we needed a variance. He calculated that it was a 50-yard setback, although, um, as we pointed out to him, the non-conforming lot provisions of the town code actually say it's a 20 rear yard setback for non-conforming lots. So we're not sure we need a variance, but again, he determined we do need one, so we are here applying for that.
Building inspector determined.
The building inspector determined, yes.
Our building inspector.
Yes.
Uh, in looking at your, uh, plans, I see the, you're looking for two variances in the back. You're looking for a 23.8 and a 24.5, but the deck, I see the deck here, so shouldn't it go from the deck back? Because the deck is gonna have to be included in a variance. If I'm wrong, tell me.
I guess if you want to copy it from the deck, that's, yeah, that's what I do.
Okay. So fix the map and let us know for the deck back, because otherwise, if we gave, if we were giving it to you, your deck would be illegal.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You wouldn't wanna throw it there. Okay. Uh, first I wanna compliment you on putting it together like that. That was an excellent job.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
And putting the application together was very, very easy to read. I'd say...
One thing I also just wanted to point out to the board, uh...
Sure.
Although the driveway would be located entirely within Nelsonville, the building inspector Nelsonville has indicated that that's the entirety of their...
I, I don't wanna hear that, okay? Because the first meeting, we had that, the building inspector said it was okay, and then the mayor said it wasn't okay. So I don't wanna hear anything about Nelsonville. You wanna do, deal with Nelsonville, you deal with Nelsonville.
Thank you.
Okay? What we're speaking about is Watson, Phillips Town.
He got it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, again, we would be happy to give a more detailed presentation, but I think that would be, might be more appropriate for the public hearing, which we'd ask the board to set.
Okay.
And then we'd also ask the board to refer this out for 239M and 239N review, since it is by a municipal boundary.
By, yeah, right. And also by, what is it, NACODOC? Is New York City, does New York City have to be notified on that?
Well, then they, they get notified as an adjoining, but not for the 239...
No, right. They get the hearing notice.
Alright, thank you. Well, I looked it over, and it looks complete to me. Does anybody have any questions on it? Anybody have any questions on this? Alright, I make a motion that the application be...
Sir Chairman, would I be able to speak on that?
Uh, this is not really, that's for the public hearing.
But this would apply to the appropriateness of the application?
Okay.
And without the additional variance.
Alright, alright. Go on, speak, identify yourself. Now, I don't wanna get too much in, because it's a long thing, so I'll give you, give you, make it short.
I will. I'll do my best. The, and it's just to make sure, and I won't address any of the factors or anything else that would be necessary during the public hearing. I do believe there's potentially some additional variances that would be required. My name's Josh Meyer. I'm here with my brother Jeff on behalf of the Meyer family, who's on the, the adjoining property immediately to the west across what's known as Douglas Lane, which is a private driveway there.
Okay.
But, uh, in the first instance, the property that's only in the town, um, it appears that it needs an area variance as well, because it's less than, it's not a non-conforming lot as we review it.
Our building inspector determined it does not.
Right, and I think that that's potentially an error, because...
Well, then you'd have to deal with the building inspector.
Okay, and so I'd like the opportunity to do that, because if I could just explain for one second.
Sure.
It wa, originally, it was a 1.22 acre lot that was in Phillips Town. Cole Spring acquired the parcel to the north, two parcels, actually, and so it was a, a, a legal lot at that point. 1.22 acres, the zoning was one acre at the time. Then they acquired that property. They didn't do it, the, the applicant is utilizing the exception in the law that says if the property is taken for a public purpose, then they get an exception from that, and it can be a legal non-conforming lot. But it wasn't taken as, as that term is used. It wasn't taken by eminent domain or condemnation or anything along those lines. So they shouldn't receive that exception, exemption from that, and they would require, at this point, a variance on that parcel. And in this case, since it's only 0.55 acres, they need a 9.45 acre variance and a, and a 94.5% variance. So I think that that's something that you may wanna look at, and, and if I could have the opportunity to speak to the building inspector about that.
Yes, I would, I would suggest that would be the person to take that over. Okay? Our building inspector. You can give him a call and explain to it, uh, explain it to, because I'm not gonna take up all the time here tonight with this.
Right, okay. Uh, but would that be put off, then, to allow him the ability...
No, we're gonna have, we're gonna call for a public hearing probably for October 2nd.
Because that would directly apply to the ability for him to deny it at that point?
He has plenty of time to deny it.
But prior to that...
If you call him and he feels that it's not, that he agrees with you, he can call us and tell us that, you know, he's gonna deny it for that, or he's not gonna allow, he wants a different variance.
Okay.
I can only go by what the building, our building inspector gives us these reports, okay? And I read his report. He says he determines that it's conforming. So he determines that we need, what they need is your lot line thing for the front and for the back.
Right, and that doesn't need to be done prior to the point at which you set the public hearing?
What doesn't have to be done?
Uh, the denial, so that it would go before your board as part of a public hearing?
Well, yeah, but a public hearing won't be until October 2nd.
So he could still deny it prior to that time, prior to you, to do that?
Just to be clear, you already denied the application for a building permit, because they need variances, and he identified that the variances that the applicant needs to demonstrate to the board, and that's what they're appealing. We're an appellate board, and we're dealing with those variances.
And that's exactly why I'm mentioning that, because he only mentioned two that were necessary, and I believe that there's ones in addition to that.
He disagrees.
I understand that, but, but, and that's why I'm discussing with this board, and as well with you, potentially, to say that that's exactly what happened. That is not the way that the code reads. Uh, it says that it's taken, and, and it's clear that that means by eminent domain or by condemnation.
Well, again, as the chairman indicated, this is a review for completeness. You certainly have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. Certainly have the opportunity to visit the issue with the building inspector, but we're hearing the appeal from the denial, so you're free to bring up those issues, but this is just a review for completeness, and we're telling you what we're considering.
Right, and so, and you would agree, though, that he would be able to deny that between now and the time of the public hearing, and that that could be taken up as a variance that would need to be obtained on this property at that time?
Well...
Or would that be subject to a separate public hearing?
Well, at, at this juncture, um, you're, you're free to raise whatever issues you deem appropriate. We're, we're an appellate body, so we are considering the appeal from the denial.
Right.
You're free to, you're free to speak to that.
Right.
Um, you're free to converse with, with the applicant and applicant's counsel before then. This is a review for completeness. The application is complete, and it's on for October 2. For what it's worth, we, we haven't made the general municipal law referral yet. We will be making that referral. I can tell you that they have 30 days in which to reply.
Sure.
Um, they might not reply before October 2. If they don't reply before October 2, technically, um, we, we can't decide it on that date. We might have to put it over. So I'm just gonna, I'm just giving you a lay of the land of what's gonna happen, but that's where we are.
And that's why I was trying to address it with the board prior to setting it for the public hearing, so that, so that if there are additional variances that are necessary, they could be all taken up at the same time. I do believe town law 280A is also in play as well, because they don't have frontage on a town. I don't know, in a sense, I don't, my whole point is not to rush it. There's, there's not frontage on a town road. Town law 280A says that they need frontage and access to a town road through, through a, a street that's either on the map, or, and that's not located on here. So that would be another one you would need...
That would be Nelsonville, Eric, that was Nelsonville, right? Correct? The other piece of property?
No, you would need it to connect, this property in the town cannot have, uh, wouldn't, uh, satisfy town law 280A. So at that point, if it, if it can't be satisfied, they can't be granted, they would need a variance on that as well. And that's why I'm asking for these additional issues to be taken up by the board.
I'm not gonna take up tonight. Okay? Uh, the public hearing is set for October 2, and we'll deal with it then. If you wanna contact our building inspector and disagree with him as far as his decision, you, you're free to do that. You can do that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it'll be...
Would you like me to respond to this?
No, no, I don't want to respond.
Any public hearing?
Public hearing. Okay, you have a public hearing set for October 2.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion?
Well, make a motion for public hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Public hearing is October 2.
Next order of business, 22 Sky Lane.
Hi, Mrs. Snyder, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, tell us what you're looking for.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Chairman and members of the board. My name is Leslie Snyder. I'm a partner in the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder, and I'm here tonight on behalf of New York S.M.S.A. Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Verizon Wireless received a special permit to locate a telecommunications facility at Sky Lane, and that consisted of co-locating antennas on an existing tower that exists on Sky Lane along with related equipment. Unfortunately, the existing tower, due to new regulations, has not been able to accommodate the antennas, and so they are in the process of working on trying to replace that tower. In the meantime, Verizon Wireless has a need to provide the necessary coverage. So what Verizon Wireless is proposing is to have a temporary facility. We call it a sell-on wheels, or a cow, at the facility, and that would be, we would request that you amend our existing special permit and allow us to have this temporary facility, and once the new facility and replacement tower is in place, we will move our antennas to that location and remove the temporary facility. Uh, we submitted all the necessary materials. We...
No, no, you haven't submitted all necessary. We're gonna go over that now.
Okay, sure.
Okay, we're gonna go over and see what, what you're lacking.
Okay, sure.
Okay, great. Uh, I guess the first thing I'm trying to say, let me give you a little, little history. I had to go to two, um, appeal, application hearings. One was for this, not hearings, but meetings for, with the town inspector. He asked me to go, the inspector. And that was in July, I guess?
Yes, it was.
And Mrs. Snyder was there, and Mr. Cardoso was there for WHUD. Correct? Uh, what they are, WHUD is, that tower's been here since the 50s. They're gonna have to put up a new tower. What their plan is to replace, no, not replace, I'm sorry, build a new tower next to the old tower, move the equipment onto the tower, and then they're going to dismantle that tower on sight. Alright? I haven't got the application yet. I guess we'll be getting it shortly. I know there was some disagreement about, you didn't think you had to come before the board. I don't know whether you are with that, Mr. Cardoso, but, uh, if the application comes before the board, what I imagine would be within the next couple of months. I guess my question is, we gave Verizon approval almost, I think it was 22 months ago, to, yeah, it was November...
In November of 2015, yes.
Yeah, 22 months, to put on their equipment on the WHUD tower. When did you find out that the standards had changed?
Uh, the standards have changed. They changed the wind load standards from a REV F to an REV G, and as a result of that, um, our engineers here, but several months, we, we've been, we had plans...
Well, I'm just curious to know when it was changed.
Um, I think that the...
Can you tell me?
The standard became, after getting the law, in 2016.
April 16, 2016. So from November 15th to April of 2016, you could've put your equipment on a tower.
Uh, well, we would've had it, you know, we would've obviously had to go through all the procedures to get a building permit, et cetera, and we knew that we...
We gave you a special permit.
We, we know that, but we would have to, we were filing, we were doing our construction drawings, and in the process of that, we realized that we would not be able to meet the new criteria. So even if we would've put our antennas up, we would not be meeting the new REV G, the new structural criteria. So that was a, that was an issue for us. We were looking to what we could do to, to deal with the tower, but it was so extensive that we could not, we cannot do that.
Right. My question was, it's been two years almost, 22 months, okay? Just hear me out. You haven't done it, okay? I mean, so I guess people have been surviving without the lack of coverage down there, and, uh, why wouldn't you wait till WHUD put up the new tower? Because in, in that meeting, they said they could put up in three or four weeks. They could put the, once they get the permit.
We've been waiting for a long time for them to, to do that. We don't, and Verizon, you know, there, there is a need for this site. We proved that when we got our special permit. Um, you know, there's, there are...
I guess it's been getting long enough for the last two years, okay?
Yeah, till there's a problem. Till you have a hurricane. I mean, unfortunately, I have friends in Florida. I mean, there's, until these terrible events, which no one foresees, um, you know, I would not wanna be someone in that area that can't provide the coverage. I mean, Verizon's customers have a need for the service, and it is quite a bit of an expense for us to put this temporary facility there.
I see that.
So it's not our first choice, but at this point, we don't wanna wait anymore. We've waited, and it has been some time, and we've waited enough time. That's why we're eager to get it done this quarter.
They didn't wait on our account.
No, we waited because we thought that it would move along quicker than it did, to be frank.
Let's, let's go over what you submitted. You submitted a, first thing was a zoning board application. Okay. The application reads, place antennas on a temporary facility. Okay. I would rather it to read, uh, temporary cell tower 100 feet high, height of 100 feet. Isn't it 100 foot, foot tall?
Uh, it is. It, it's not a cell tower per se. It is a, um, I mean, it is not in the, in the permanent sense. It's not gonna be a permanent structure. It's gonna be...
Is it a temporary cell tower?
Right.
Okay. I would like to see temporary cell tower of 100 feet height.
Well, we cite the plans, but if you want us to clarify that, we're more than happy.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna back that up.
Okay. Now, the second thing that you're gonna need is, in looking at your site plan, you're 50 feet from the road.
Correct.
Okay. You're gonna, you need 150 feet. Okay? According to the town code, you need 150 feet. So you're, you're looking for 100-foot variance to put this equipment up. Am I correct, Mr. Cardoso, as an engineer? Okay. I'm not an engineer, but I could read the book. So you need 100, you're gonna need 100-foot variance. So you're gonna need another application for variance. My question to my attorney is, can we make this all into one, or does she need another application for that variance?
You can make it into one, and I think in their application materials, they did, you know, refer to the fact that there's 150-foot requirement for, they call it a front setback, and they're proposing 50.
Right.
So we can consider that at the same time that, that we consider the amendment to the special permit.
Okay, that was on the site plan. The site plan said, read it, that it was 100, required 150, and they're only at 50. So... Right. So...
We've left that in our statement in support, and we can put that, um, that was not noted originally by the building inspector, I think because of the temporary nature of this type of facility, sort of like a...
Do you know anything about how with temporary natures, sometimes things don't tend to stay there a long time, you know, like the two years that, that you haven't put your equipment on. You know, so, um, alright, so you're not gonna waste, you wanna place this thing on this thing. Okay. Now, uh, and the variance you, we can include in this thing. Okay, good. Now, this, you, the other thing you gave us was, the other requirement was a statement of support, which is good. Deed for the property is okay. Certificates of occupancy is okay. And you provided a shortened, violent assessment form. I think this is gonna be a unlisted action. Am I correct?
Correct. So you would just need a long form.
A long form.
Okay, I mean, you can use a short form for an unlisted action as well. You only need a, um, you only need the long form if it was a type 1 action, but I have no objection. I'm not sure if there's anything we would need additionally, but if your council would like us, we can supplement it with a long form as well. I'm just not sure it's necessary due to the nature, because it's, you know, we're not really doing any disturbance other than putting this, this temporary facility down.
Well, you disturb, you're gonna have to cut some trees down to put it there.
I don't believe so.
I went and looked at the site today. There's a lot of trees there.
There are a few trees.
Excuse me, can everyone use the microphone?
Alright, you gotta get up to the microphone. I went and I looked at the site today. As a matter of fact, I met the caretaker who, house burnt down, I guess, up there on top of Sky Lane. And then he, I guess it's WHUD's house, owns the house, I believe, or something like that. So, you know, he burnt down.
Um, yeah, some...
But I looked at it. There is, there are trees there.
There are trees there, just not at the location where the tower is going, but to place it there, we will have to remove some trees to get it there.
Well, it's 200 feet from the, from the tower, right? Basically, is that where you're gonna put it?
Yes, yeah.
Why does it have to be so far from the tower?
Uh, multiple reasons. First is that the, the land in that area is, it's a steep slope. Uh, we wanna have at least the height that we would have achieved if we had been on the original tower. So just to keep that and keep the temporary tower limited to 100 feet, we had to keep it at that elevation. If we move it further back, then it's gonna be lower, and then we need a...
It'll be lower in the valley, you'd have to make the...
We'll need a lo, a higher, a taller tower, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to put this over to the next meeting, so you get the full environmental form and the, and the other, any other information that we respond to.
Honestly, there's not much due to the nature of ours, so if there was a way that we could at least have our public hearing, and we'll be happy to submit the long form in the next day or so, because, um, that would be greatly appreciated.
Let me ask, let me ask the consultant a minute. Maron, what do you think about what we need besides that?
Sure, the, um, has the...
We gotta get up to the microphone.
I'm, I'm...
Since you're looking for a public hearing, I just don't wanna, you know, make sure we have everything that we need.
No, that's correct. The applicant's attorney is correct that for an unlisted action, you only require a short form EAF, but I have no objection to town council suggesting use of a long form. Uh, that's totally fine. Uh, that's not a significant issue for the applicant, I think, to produce. That can easily be produced probably shortly after tonight's meeting. Um, there's various other administrative things that, that the board will wanna do as well, just given the nature of the application. One of it is pursuant to your town code. The first thing one does for a special permit application is to determine whether it falls under the criteria for a minor or major project. Based on prior discussions that I've had with council when the application was filed, it was their recommendation, since they've already had a special permit, and this is basically a workaround until the WHUT tower is replaced, that it should be considered a minor project. So I'd suggest that tonight's meeting, you take that action to formally declare it as a minor project. Uh, there's also a need, based on its proximity to the town boundary, that a referral be made to county planning, and both of those actions, I think, could proceed tonight so that that, at least, the administrative requirements are accomplished through your code.
Right. Well, I, I think I read in the emails back and forth to Steve Godf, I think his town attorney, I think he, he felt that it was a minor.
Exactly. That's, that's the guidance that I'm providing to you in the written materials after me.
Right, he felt it was a minor.
That's all coming from council's office.
Uh, I guess I have to ask the board members, are they, do you agree with the minor action or major act minor?
I agree.
Minor, okay. Uh, just so I understand what you're saying, I'm gonna ask for a time limit on this.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
No objections.
Okay.
New towers up, we wanna be on the new towers.
Right, and then it's gonna be removed quickly, you know, like that. Okay.
No objections.
Um, so I get it. So I get it. I guess you can have the stuff for us next month, we'll, we'll put it on for a public hearing if there's any, does anybody agree or disagree, or, all right, can I get a motion for it just to be put on for a public hearing?
Just a move, second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, October 2nd, Mr. Snyder, thank you. All right.
Bob, I would, did you make a formal motion that it is a minor project?
Oh, no, okay, make a formal-
Also, we're gonna find out if it's a done project.
Oh, Putnam County Planning, right, and I'm making a formal motion that it be classified as a minor project.
Some move.
Some move? One in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next order of business-
You know, if county planning doesn't get back to us in 30 days, we can't act-
Can we act?
Cannot.
Cannot act.
Until they either get back to us, or 30 days has elapsed, so, as long as, in other words, it could still, you know, we can keep the October 2 date, but we might not be able to make any decisions unless county planning gets back to us.
Okay. Next order of business is cell tower at Vine Yard Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder, on behalf of New York SNSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless and Homeland Towers LLC.
Now, you submitted, uh, thank you for submitting all the, all the corrections that I asked you. At our June meeting, I asked you for a number of corrections and all that, and instead of just making corrections, you made new reports, so I appreciate that.
Correct.
So what I'd like to do to move this along is, we'll go along with your letter, I'll address your letter as you has numbered.
Great.
Okay? And this way you can go over each one and know where we're at, if, or we need anything else, okay? And then at the end of the meeting, not at the end of the meeting, I'm sorry, at the end of this, I'm gonna ask for a report from RF engineer and R engineer, personally, you know, town engineer, okay? The first note you have is, in the application form, okay, so you changed that to read, you have an address now, 50 Vine Yard Road?
Correct.
And you changed it to read, instead of being just a cell tower, you have the height on it, 180-foot monopole. Okay, so that's good. A second one, you have independent frequency, radio frequency report. I guess that's to, net gas, but it gets to provide the board with a reason for having a cell tower, period.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna, like I say, ask our RF engineer to address that, but I have a question there. You have like several pages of where towers are and so on and so forth, and then you have McKeel's Corner, okay? Then you have with McKeel's Corner and without McKeel's Corner. And also, I saw some note that you were gonna maybe abandon McKeel's Corner and replace it with this?
We would, we would replace McKeel's Corners with this site, correct?
So why wouldn't you just leave McKeel's Corner, and then we wouldn't need this?
Because McKeel's Corners does not provide the full coverage to the area, whereas this would, and then this would be duplicative of McKeel's Corners. So that's why we would eliminate McKeel's Corners.
All right, so we have a cell tower, you're eliminating for, to put this one in.
Correct.
Okay, is that one working? McKeel's Corners?
It's, it's working to cover a limited area, but it's not covering all of the gaps, particularly on 301 and Route 9.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Next door, next one you got is the antenna compliant assessment report. I see you made the corrections on that, right? You only have certification on the back, it reads, it says that the results of the analysis demonstrates compliance with FCC regulations and limits concerning the control of potential human exposure to the RF emissions from antennas. I know that we discussed about the 500 feet, and that some of the homes are closer than 500 feet, have you addressed that at all? Does any exposure under 500 feet?
Correct. We've, we have a chart in the report that includes all the distances within 500 feet, and then what the question was, the closest residence, which we also included a specific calculation for that as well in the report. There's also a statement in the report that at any distance, the facility is in compliance with the FCC regulations.
Next, let's see, visual resources assessment. And the old one you had was like, but you had the wrong addresses on, you had the Fishkill Tower on. Secondly, you had, you were projecting a simulation of a tower that had like only one unit on the top, and I'd asked for it to be projected the way it was going to be, three or four companies on it.
Well, it's only going to be one, but we are building it for future co-location capacity, and we showed those additional three.
Yeah, correct. I see that. Now, page three of that report, I'm gonna go to page three, second paragraph down, the one that addresses 100 Rock Wall Road. I'll wait till you get it. Okay, 100 Rock Wall. It says, 100 Rock Wall is the closest residence to the tower site.
Correct.
The structure is approximately 750 feet northeast to the proposed tower. The residence is at an elevation of 765 feet, approximately 80 feet higher than the proposed tower base, and approximately 100 feet lower than the tower top. The rear of the house, including outdoor deck, face southwesterly, and the rear yard slopes downhill in the direction of the tower. The tower appears to be approximately 250 feet from the property line, as measured in the straight line between the tower and the house. So, and then you go into the back where he has his maps, he says it's still 760 feet. I'm not the best at math, but I know if I measured 250 feet or 200 feet from my property line, how does it become 760 feet?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following, there's a, there's a specific map in the back.
No, go to the, go to the paragraph, go to page three.
I understand the paragraph, I think-
I don't understand it, that's why, the reason I'm asking.
Well, if you look, if you look at the map, which is attached to the sight line-
Which page are you on?
Uh, that's, that's this map here.
That's, there's a lot of maps. Give me a number on the bottom.
So it's Appendix B?
Appendix B, okay. Yeah, I see it, where it says 825 feet?
So that's to 60 Round Hill Road.
Okay.
So 100 Rock Wall is 765 feet.
My question is simple.
Approximately, because we're using an aerial map, and we couldn't survey the other gentleman's property.
I'm a plain man, I just need to ask simple questions. If it's 250 feet from the property line, how does it become 760 feet?
It's, it's from the tower to our property line, and then from our property line to the residence. And when you add those two distances up, it's 760, 765 feet.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I'll go, I'll speak to our RF engineer on that. Also, you speak to, there's no, let's see, I'll continue on the paragraph. The proposed project currently under consideration by the ZPA includes one antenna array to be located near the top of the 180-foot tall tower.
Correct.
So what, so you're gonna have antennas on top of the tower?
No, the antennas, as shown on the site plan, the top of the tower is 180 feet, the antennas go up to that maximum, but no higher than 180 feet.
Not, no higher than 180 feet.
Correct.
Okay. However, the tower is designed to accommodate three additional antennas, arrays at lower level elevations. Although illustrations of these arrays in the future would require additional municipal approval. Questions have been raised concerning the visual appearance of the proposed telecommunications tower. Should all four arrays be constructed? To address this question, supplement photo simulations are attached, Appendix C, illustrating the possible future four-array configurations. Even with the speculating of four-figure, array configuration, the proposed facility will not have an inverse visual impact. Okay. Now, if you go to, let's see, in the same report, it would be Figure C, 8B. It's a simulated picture of 60 Round Hill Road. Want to turn to that, pick it out yourself, so we're on the same page, please? Okay. You have that?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Snyder. This is, I guess, the above photo, let's see, it says it was taken from the view from the elevated deck in the rear of 60 Round Hill. Okay. I'm looking at a tower with three companies on it.
Well, you can't see the fourth, because it's below the tree line.
I can't see the fourth, I can see the other three.
Correct.
Okay. How does it not have a, how could you stand there and say that it's not a visual impact? I guess is my question. How could a man write a report with, say, there's no visual, would you want to be on a deck looking at that?
Well, let me say this, I, I don't think that's a fair question, and-
Why?
And becau-
I'm asking, why don't you think it's a fair question?
Because you're asking me, would I want to be on the deck looking at it?
No, I see if you were-
I mean, I could answer that question a million ways, no, I wouldn't want to be on the gentleman's staff looking at it.
No, I know, lawyer, I understand you're a lawyer.
I'd rather be someplace else.
I'm asking you a comments person, if you were sitting on that deck looking at that, wouldn't you think that would be impact to you?
So, the, the issue of aesthetic impact is not a subjective question, the way you're opposing it to me. The case law and even the DEC manual on assessing visual impact requires that it be an objective review. And throughout this report and the prior report, there's a full analysis of what an objective review of that particular legal term under secret means. And in fact, the DEC in that report specifically states, quote, "A view of something, even a startling view of something, is not necessarily a significant adverse visual impact." So you have to look at it in the context of what the legal standard is, not simply, would you think that that's a visual impact if you were standing on the, on the deck? So the, the expert in the report is basing his conclusions on that standard, based on his experience, based on his training, and based on his analysis. So that's why the report was written, based on his opinion.
Okay. I'm just looking at the picture. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm not anything, I don't want the legal ease of it. Or, if I was sitting on a deck looking at that, it would be an impact to me. Actually, it's a personal opinion. I'm entitled to my personal opinion.
I never said you weren't.
Okay. Uh, next one, is your visual UAF. I see you changed the, you changed the, your previous answers to include that there are residential homes in the area. Before, you had, there was no residential homes.
I, I-
No, you are, the box was empty.
It's, it's a matter, it's a matter of-
Of what?
Of the distances, and as you know, we're on a non-commercial property, so we did check the box based on your request.
There are residential homes there, correct?
Again, there's residential homes within the area, so we checked the box, but we're on a commercial property.
Okay. And the pond, you checked finally that there was a pond there, you know, before you didn't have that.
We, we checked it as a pond, it's basically a retention pond, but we did check it as a pond.
It's a pond.
It's, it's a retention pond, so-
A retention pond, okay. I'm sorry I didn't say retention pond, but it's a pond.
There's a, there's a distinction in that.
Okay. Next one, you had was, the old answer was annual number of viewers, you had 500, okay? Now you changed it to daily number of viewers was 12,900, so that makes more sense.
Well, what we did is, and there's a footnote in there, where we specifically note that we pulled the DOT traffic counts.
Right.
And we added those up, and there's a note that not every person in the traffic count will necessarily have a view of the tower, but we tried to give you something that was at least based on some data from a government source.
But you had to agree 500 was completely off.
I, you know-
Going back to legal ease, okay.
I, I could probably agree that the 12-something is probably off too.
Right, all right, so it's closer to-
I think it's an impossible question.
It's closer to 4 million than 500, I mean, 1,290,000 at day times 265, it's up.
I don't know if it's closer to 4 million than 500.
Okay. Next one, environmental assessment form. Enclosed, Eva has revised to update the address of the property. That's fine, okay. Tribal consultation. I guess this is from the Delaware Nation?
Yes.
Says that, please continue with the planned project, however, should this project inadvertently uncover an archaeological site or object, we request you to halt all construction and ground disturbance immediately, and contact the approximate state agencies within 24 hours. Next one is alternative locations on a property. Now, we spoke, I know at the meeting, about you were gonna talk to the town board about the landfill at Lane Gate Road, did you do that?
We spoke to the supervisor and council, we promised that we would look at it from a radio frequency engineering situation, and we did.
Have you done that?
Yes.
Have you looked at it from radio frequency?
Yes.
And what is the answer?
The answer in the report that you have is that it does not, it does not satisfy the coverage gap.
It doesn't satisfy what, I'm sorry?
It, it's not a feasible alternative from a coverage standpoint.
It's not feasible, so, so Lane Gate Road is not feasible to your company.
Correct.
All right, did you discuss another location, like that Phillips Town Garage, the possibility of putting it there?
Well, that, that we did discuss, but not in the context of this area, that's all the way over by Nelsonville, and that would be an alternative, potentially, we haven't reviewed it from a radio frequency standpoint for Nelsonville.
Did you discuss that with the town board?
No, we, I, we mentioned it, well, we, we approached the town back in 2015, we eventually did not receive a positive response to go forward, we sent a conclusory letter. Eventually, when I did speak with the supervisor, I guess it was about a month, month and a half, they said that they would be interested in reevaluating it, that is in front of the Nelsonville boards, and what we've asked Nelsonville is if that's a, an alternative they'd like us to pursue. But that has no bearing on this particular area.
Well, my, my question to you was, when you talked to the town about the Lane Gate, did you talk to them about Phillips Town Garage?
They were, they were initially two separate discussions, and the last time we spoke, we spoke about both, but on a very preliminary basis with respect to the DPW property.
Okay. Now, you have a letter in here from Mr. Fad, the owner of the property.
Correct.
I'll read the letter for the record. Chairman Dean, members of the board, this letter, the letter has requested Vincent Xavier of Homeland Towers is to advise you that I am not willing to lease any other location on my Vine Yard Road property for the purpose of erecting a cell tower. I've carefully considered other locations of my property, and have concluded that the location as currently specified is the only one that is acceptable. It's kind of putting, it's starting to, our options are getting low, are getting thin, I guess. What we were trying to do is look for possible another location on this property. It's 64 acres of vacant land, I guess, right? But it starts at the commercial property at Route 9, and works its way up the hill to residential, okay? You couldn't have put this any closer to the residential homes as possible. You have to be 150 feet away, and you're 200 feet away, basically, or 250 feet away. So I'm a little disappointed that the gentleman feels that way, because, you know, it kind of closed the board in, we don't have a lot of options here. Now you look, now you're telling me also that the Lane Gate is no option, right?
Well, what I told you is that the town was initially not interested in Lane Gate.
The town's not interested in Lane Gate.
Okay, then we looked at it from a radio frequency standpoint, and it doesn't work. And that's where the analysis...
If the town was interested in it, would it be, would you want to go, you know, and talk to them about it, I guess?
No.
No?
It doesn't work from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, so that's dead?
Yes.
All right. I'm just trying to get what's good and what's bad here. Okay, so Lane Gate's dead. Okay. So this is it. Either we put it here, or we don't put it anywhere?
Well...
I mean, as far as the board, the board has very limited options here.
We've proposed a site that meets the height limit, meets all the setback limits. We've proposed a site that's in the preferred commercial zone. We believe we've looked at the alternatives in the area and made a good faith basis as far as that look. If there was a particular alternative site that was raised, and you said to us, would you please consider that as an alternative, we would certainly do that due diligence.
Well, we did that. We asked you for Lane Gate, and you're telling me now, your RF guy says it's no good.
Well, we, correct, we followed through on that, and we contacted the town, and they said we might be interested. Quite frankly, they never said we are definitely interested. They asked us first to evaluate it from an engineering standpoint, which we did.
Well, it's kind of, I guess it's a dead issue, because even if they were interested, you don't want to use it. You can't use it.
They haven't said they're interested, but we looked at it from an engineering standpoint, and it's not a feasible alternative.
The town supervisor is here. I'm going to, are you interested?
Yes.
Mr. Shay, he's interested in listening to you.
Yeah, it doesn't work from an engineering standpoint.
Okay. So, all that talk about meeting them means nothing, because it doesn't work for you?
Well, it's a chicken and egg process. So what we did is, was we looked initially in the area for locations that might be feasible. And that's outlined in the alternative site analysis that we submitted back on May 23rd. And what that talked about is, first, we looked at municipal properties, which is something that Homeland Towers is accustomed to doing. And we documented in the alternatives analysis, our correspondence back and forth with the town, and at the time, they weren't interested. And quite frankly, they weren't interested with a prior carrier that I represented for a prior cell tower down on Route 9. So this was nothing unusual, this was nothing new. And quite frankly, I think the sense is, is that that site would be more visible than the proposed site. But in any event, our next step was to look at the zoning code and the requirements of the code. And when you look at the zoning code, the OC zone is basically a preferred zone. Rather than 110-foot height limit, it allows 195-foot height limit. The setbacks, we meet all of the setbacks. So, based on all of the code provisions, we feel that we found a site that only requires a special use permit, which is used permitted as of right, provided you meet the criteria. But as I mentioned before, we're happy to look at different alternatives if they were raised as a less intrusive alternative.
I'd just like to say something. Although your particular site is on a commercial zone, it abuts a scenic overlay zone, which has view of the structures that you're going to put there.
So, I think two things. I think, number one, we do meet all the setbacks. Number two, there is no setback from the scenic overlay zone, and we're not actually in it. So if we were in it, I think that's a very compelling argument, but we're not in it.
I understand you're not in it, but you're abutting it.
And we do meet, and I think we pretty much abut it or be in the vicinity of it any place in this area. When you look at the map, we did the three different maps of the three different overlays. The entire area is, you know, has some type of overlay somewhere in the area. And our particular property does not. And it's a fairly large property, as you mentioned before. And we meet all the setbacks. You mentioned the residential zone. There's a specific residential zone setback. We meet that setback. So, all we did is we followed the code as far as the location on this particular property.
We're looking for alternative sites, because this is close to residential. You understand the reasoning for the board, that they're looking for an alternative site.
Well, the alternative should be something that's quote-unquote "less intrusive." And if you have an alternative, we'd be happy to explore that.
I do. I have an alternative on this piece of property. Move it closer to the residential area, but the owner doesn't want to go along with it.
The owner will not agree to that.
Okay. So, but there is an alternative, you know, but the owner doesn't want any further.
Sure.
Why don't you do a distributed antenna system along 401, and completely eliminate the tower and connect McKeel's Corners from those distributed antennas?
So we had our engineer evaluate that, and that is in the report. And it's not feasible in this particular area to provide the wide area coverage that's necessary. The topography, the trees, the size of those, and the coverage of those types of nodes just wouldn't provide the coverage throughout this area.
Okay.
I would like to see that.
There is an analysis in our report.
During the...
Yeah, I noticed that you said it wasn't feasible, but I didn't see any backup information as to why not.
Well, I think it's in his narrative in his report. And I also pointed out that there is case law right on point that says that that type of alternative technology is not something that a board could technically require. But we looked at it anyway. From an RF standpoint, it is in the report.
Okay. You mentioned height. I have another question. I see that you applied for your permit for Nelsonville. And I guess it's 110-foot tower is what you're asking for?
Correct. That's the height limit in Nelsonville, is 110 feet.
Well, if 110-foot would work in Nelsonville, why wouldn't 110-foot work here?
Well, it's a different coverage requirement in Nelsonville. It's trying to...
Different coverage requirement?
It's a different...
Different towns have different coverage requirements?
No, no, no. It's a different need in Nelsonville. The area in Nelsonville is completely different than the area of the Route 301 and 9 corridor. It's just, well, number one, it's the size of the area that's being covered. Number two, it's the topography of the area. Number three, it's the denseness of the Nelsonville-Cold Spring area that's being covered. The surrounding sites, the coverage from the surrounding sites is different in that location than it is in this location. So there's, it's just a different, it's a different type of analysis from this area to that area. The design criteria and the signal levels are exactly the same, though.
Okay. Next is fire safety and accessibility. I'm glad to see you addressed that, because there's a lot of concern. I read 55 or 57 letters, and that always seemed, the majority of people seem to be there. Also, at the last meeting, a gentleman spoke who, his brother leased a property to, if you remember, leased a property to a tower company, and all of his trees, from the heat, a lot of his trees turned brown. So I tried to do some research on it. I found it a little difficult. But I see that you did provide a letter here from your engineer. Not your engineer, I'm sorry, your...
It was from our engineer, you were correct.
Your site manager, project manager. I'll read the letter for the record. Homeland Towers, this is from your site manager, James Carris, correct?
Yeah, James Carris. James is with us.
Mr. Carris, okay. Okay. Homeland Towers is proposing construction of wireless communications facility at the above- referenced site. During the course of review, was raised related to fire safety and accessibility. We offer to follow information for clarification. The wireless telecommunications tower proposed for this site is known as a monopole. These structures are fabricated with hollow sections of metal, which provide for telecommunications lines to be rooted within the structure. Monopoles do not catch on fire. Some materials located within the pole are flammable. Monopole fires are very rare, and a tower constructed by Homeland Towers has never burned. However, these structures are not immune to fire, and it could be caused by onsite modification or installation typically when a contractor performing field welding. Another potential fire cause could be a lightning strike, but there is no more likely than a home or tree receiving a strike and catching fire. On a rare occasion, a fire does occur. It could be fueled by rubber coating surrounding the telecommunications coax cables inside the pole. This condition causes the smoke that is sometimes seen in amateur videos available online. It should be noted that the carriage generally no longer use coax cables within tower installations, but utilize fiber optic cables industry-wide. With regard to access, Homeland Towers is providing a 12-foot wide gravel surface driveway site, which runs approximately 260 feet from Vineyard Road to the facility entrance. Vehicles will travel approximately 0.40 miles along Vineyard Road before gaining access to the site driveway. Beyond the site, Vineyard Road continues approximately 0.65 miles, upgraded into the east, and serves two existing single-family homes. There are no proposed changes to the existing conditions on Vineyard Road. The access drive and Vineyard Road are satisfactory for emergency service vehicles, including fire operas. I'm looking at your letterhead, Mr. Carris. The only thing I don't see, I see a lot. I see site planning, civil engineering, land surveying. I don't see anything about fire safety. Can you give me your fire safety expertise?
I mean, I think his...
You can answer that?
Well, his comments, his comments are factual as far as what the existing tower or the proposed tower is made out of, and what the history of Homeland Towers.
The comments I was regarding to is the 12-foot wide road is satisfactory for emergency service.
Well, that's a civil engineering issue, obviously.
That's engineering, okay. I was concerned about the firing thing, too. So what I did was, I was able to arrange a meeting with the help of Mr. Councilman Van Tassel, with the fire chief, okay, of North Highlands.
Which fire department?
North Highlands. I'm going to give you, here's a copy of it. North Highlands Fire Engine Company.
This is the one dated July 16th?
I just gave it...
July 16th, though.
Correct. July 16th. Ron, you want to take one of these? Just two, one for the secretary, please. Okay. I was able to arrange a meeting, I say with Councilman Van Tassel's help, with the chief of the fire department, North Highlands Fire Company. He's the one who's going to be in charge if there was a fire, he would have to respond to it. I sat down, I was able to meet with him in his conference room up there, and met with him and his, with Chief Pat Scher, and his assistant chief. We went over the site plan, we spent some time doing it. I asked him if this site plan met the fire department requirements, and if it did not, what would he need? He said it did not meet their requirements, and he gave me a list of things that it would need in order to meet the fire department requirements. I'll read that, and then we'll go over them. And Chairman D., I'm writing you in regards to the meeting we had on Thursday, July 13th. In that meeting, we reviewed the site plan for the proposed cell tower on Vineyard Road. As discussed, there are a few issues that need to be addressed before moving forward. The following are the issues we have identified that need attention. The front parking area needs to be an area of 60 by 60 feet. Okay, right now, I'm going to read the whole letter, then we'll go over it, okay? The roadway needs to be at least 15 feet wide. The roadway and parking area must be installed with the surface capable of supporting the imposed load of fire apparatus weighing at least 75,000 pounds. There needs to be a maintained clearance of 15 feet around the shed area. Aside from these issues, we'd like to add a few stipulations to the project. The tower owner provides an additional shed of the same size added to the plan for storage of emergency service radio systems. The tower owner installs and maintains antennas for emergency services onsite at their cost. The tower owner covers initial cost of radio systems specified by emergency service, police, fire, and EMS agencies. Once these issues are addressed and stipulations agreed to, we see no issue with the site plan as pertains to the tower. However, we do see an issue with the site itself. We request the company to review previous town dump site on Lane Gate Road. We believe this would be a better site due to terrain, height, and access. Though we are requesting this review of a different site, we are not requiring it. A tower is, and either location would greatly expand our radio communications. So we'll go over them, starting from the first one. Parking area 60 by 60. Right now, you have a parking area of, let's see. Let's see. Oh, of course, visual. It's somewhere. I don't have the site plan in front of me, but I believe it was like 20 by 20 or something like that. I'm not sure. I'll have to go with the site plan. But what they ask for is 60 by 60. That's so fire engines could turn around if they had to go to the site. You have 12-foot wide, they're looking for 15-foot wide, you know. Not that they're looking for it, requiring 15-foot wide. Now, as far as the roadway surface, that would have to be on your site plan, and agreed to by our engineer, that the road was strong enough to cover, to carry equipment of 75, I think, 1,000 pounds.
Yeah, I'm assuming this is a specification somewhere that's normally required of all applicants, or...
I'm sorry?
Is this a specification in the code somewhere, or this is required of all applicants proposing projects, or is this just to this particular application?
You presented a fire, your fire opinion. In your opinion, you said that it was okay. Okay. I'm not a fire expert, so I did go to the...
I'm just asking where the specification came from, that's all.
And these are the requirements. Now...
Because I've never seen requirements such as this.
I'm sorry?
I've never seen requirements such as this for any cell tower application in Phillips Town, or any other application in Phillips Town. But we'll certainly take them into consideration.
You give me 500 pages from different consultants, a lot of different consultants that you pay for. If one of them had gone to the fire company, they would have found this out. I took the time to do that.
Well, if we would have had the July 16th letter before September 11th, we would have been in a better position tonight to address these issues as well. But we'll certainly, we'll certainly address the issues. I have no problem with that.
I mean, you agree to all these?
No, I didn't say we agree to them. I say we will address them.
When are you going to address them?
Well, we'll have our engineer look at them.
Okay. And next meeting?
And we'll put in a response as we deem appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be honest with you. I think, you know, we have, we've said this from day one. We have no problem working with emergency services and making sites available. But quite frankly, this letter is an insult. This is a two-month-old letter that has specifications in it. If I may finish, that's not in the code, that I've never heard of an application, and it's based on then, you know, what I'll call an extraction from the applicant for, quite frankly, items that are, that are an extraction. Now, I'm not denying it on the spot, but we'll certainly take a look at it. We'll talk to the fire district and see exactly what their requirements are, and we'll...
These are the requirements in the fire district. I talked to the fire district. You didn't talk to them, I did.
Well, of course, but we only received this letter tonight, and it's two months old.
I understand it, and I expect you, I certainly give you time to review it with your...
It's asking for us to pay for initial costs of something that, quite frankly, is an extraction, and there's not, and there's not any even type of estimate in here of what these costs could be.
Let's take it by, you know, as far as the equipment. They're asking, I guess, to pay for equipment installed in order to respond to a cell tower fire.
No, that's not what they're asking for here. That's absolutely not what they're asking for here. If they're conceding to the fact that they have insufficient communications, we'll be happy to try and work out an accommodation with them directly, but...
Well, it can't directly. It has to come back to us, okay? I understand what you're saying, work directly with the fire department. But right now, at this point in time, this is what the fire department is requiring.
So the zoning board is requiring that we accept these conditions?
Let me call the zoning board.
Okay.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll poll. Do you feel that these requirements, not asked for, but requested by the fire department, should be part of this application?
Mr. May? No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I do.
I do. That's for the one that the board agrees that these fire requirements be met. Now, next month, you could, you know, give me your answer.
Sure.
Okay. All right, next one. Liability insurance. Okay, you got a copy of that, that's good. Removal cost estimate and bond. That copy is good. Removal agreement, I read that. I don't see a problem with that. Notification letters. I know you notified all the surrounding areas. I think it came to about 14 or 15, 15 different towns and villages that have been notified. So I think that's fine. And the site plan, the only thing about the site plan, we'd want the site plan changed. We would request the site tend to be changed to meet the fire department's requirements. And that's about it. I guess, at this point in time, we could put this over for review, for you to continue till October 2nd. I'll give you time to speak to your applicant on the...
Is the board willing to set this for a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Because you haven't answered the questions as far as the...
The questions that you raised tonight from a letter that you obtained back in July 16th. There's absolutely nothing incomplete about this application. What I will state for the record is that January, there's nothing incomplete about this application. We've submitted every document that's required by the code. We've submitted every document that you requested that we revise at the past two meetings. We sat out the August meeting, because, the August month, because there was no meeting. We've submitted every document. The only thing you've asked us to consider is a letter that's nearly two months old that you provided to us this evening. So, all I'm asking for officially, on the record, is that a public hearing be set. If you choose not to, I'll just remind the board, as I reminded you in my letter, that there is an FCC shock lock. There is a presumption of an unreasonable delay by January 5th. So, I don't see any downside to having the public hearing, and that's our request.
Okay. First of all, on June, we had a June meeting. I gave you a long list of corrections of things that were inaccurate in your reports. Okay. We had a July meeting. You gave us nothing. That wasn't our fault, it was your fault.
Do you have everything now, though?
I gave you a chance to speak. Please give me the same respect. Okay. August, we're on vacation. Everybody goes on vacation. With September, you have things. What you don't have is, the site plan has to be changed for the fire department, and we're still haven't had our reports from our RF engineer and our town engineer. So I don't know if they're going to require us some more information. So at this point in time, why don't we just listen to them, and then we'll go from there?
Sounds good.
Mr. Ganna?
Thank you. Again, the board has a technical memorandum from my office, as well as from the board's engineer, Mr. Grave, who's with us tonight. My letter goes through various statutory and administrative requirements. With respect to the application itself, the project also involves the conservation board, because a wetlands permit has to be granted for the access driveway that enters the site, because it's in vicinity of the onsite retention bond.
Right. If, I mean, he has, Mr. Gaddo's talks to his applicant, but they'd agree to these terms with the fire department, and the roadway had to be widened, and I guess the 15 feet around the fence line would have to be cleared more, would that have to go back to the conservation board?
Oh, they're in the process of dealing with the conservation board now. So if there's plans that do get revised, I'm sure the board would see them as well. The issue of widening the driveway by a few feet is not, would not be seen as material with the conservation board to pursue a wetlands permit.
Right. I mean, any cutting a tree is 15-foot around. They're looking for 15-foot clearance around here.
Right, right. So again, the permits required, that actually involves environmental review action, and because there's another involved agency, one who gives a permit for this action, we're suggesting that you do a coordinated environmental review. It's been discussed previously, but you've never formally made a determination that a coordinated review will be done, and we're suggesting that that formally be determined tonight, and that you direct that a referral be made to the conservation board for determination of lead agency. So that's one action that we're suggesting you do tonight. In our technical letter, we had also recommended that a referral be made to North Highlands Fire Department. Obviously, that's now been done. And I'd like to take their comments under advisement as well, just to understand what their desires are.
Well, let's go back to what the joint secret with the conservation board?
Right.
Okay. I guess that would have to be through a meeting with the conservation board?
Doesn't have to be a meeting, no. What you need to do, just pursuant to secret, is to acknowledge that there's another involved agency, and just formally declare your... is to acknowledge that there's another involved agency, and just formally declare your notice of intent to become lead agency pursuant to seeker, so that the one action that this board would take in terms of a seeker declaration would apply to any other involved agencies. Typically, that's more conveniently done when there's multiple agencies that are involved in the same action.
So that's fine. So they should make a motion to.
Declare their intent, right. Declare their intent to become lead agency pursuant to seeker. That should be a, a motion tonight.
Do you get any motion?
Also move, that would become the lead agency.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And then, again, administratively, pursuant to town code, just as we had discussed with the prior action, pursuant to one seventy-five sixty C of your code for special permits and site plans, this actually represents a major project, because it's a, it's proposing a hundred and eighty-foot tower on the site. That becomes a major project, and you should so classify it tonight, just for the formality of making that determination.
Make a motion to make this a major project on fifty Vineyard Road, the cell tower?
I still move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you clear that this is a major action?
Right, right. And then the, there's a variety of statutory requirements that you had just summarized in terms of the agreement for removal and repair, the establishment of a bond calculation for that repair.
Right.
Proof of insurance. All of that has been filed, or documents have been filed. They're currently under the review by the town council's office, so there'll be a separate report that comes out as to their sufficiency when the attorney has completed their review.
Okay.
Again, as has been discussed, there's a requirement for a public hearing on the matter that, that has to be resolved before the end of the, or the deadline for the shot clock is achieved.
So January fifth, is that what we're looking at, or?
It's in the applicant's filings. I don't recall the specific date.
Okay.
And then beyond these administrative things, as I said, I've invited Mr. Graff here tonight. He's gone through the technical information for the RF documents that have been filed, which encompass the, the bulk of the technical review that you're anxious to hear about. So I'll introduce Mr. Graff at this point.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Ronald Graef. I'm an independent radio frequency consulting engineer. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New York State. Hold a bachelor of science degree in electrical engineering from the Pennsylvania State University, and I have assisted numerous communities in the Harlem and Hudson Valleys, and pretty much up to Albany, on reviewing cell tower applications. The one before you is, the package was quite, how can I say it? It was quite cluttered with a lot of, a lot of information that is difficult to go through for a board such as yours. I received the first report, and it's important when we talk about this tonight, that we make sure that everyone's on the same page. The first report that I received was in August, and that was on August twenty-fifth, and I took a preliminary review of that report and found a number of issues that, that made that report less than acceptable. One of them that was, none of the exhibits had, were identified. A-one, A, A-one, C-one, whatever they were, for some reason in the printing process, they got eliminated. Also, there was lack of information with respect to the alternate site, and as well as the, the site that you address as McKeel's Corners, because it is an existing site, and your ordinance does require that the carrier utilize existing sites, and they say they like to do that, but they said it didn't work. So the, the request to Attorney Guardioso, and he agreed with that, that that site should be evaluated at various heights. But he evaluated it according to what the zone is that that particular tower's in, and I guess it's in a zone that permits one hundred and ten feet, as opposed to the zone that this proposed tower's in, one hundred and ninety-five feet is the permitted height. So that new information came to me on September seventh of this year, so that was like, just a very short time ago. And Mr. Gainer suggested that I have a report prepared for your board for tonight's meeting, and I said, you know, that, it's going to be quick. So I, I will preface my comments tonight as, this is not my best work, because I would really expect sometimes two weeks.
Well, I want your best work, okay? Let's, let's back up.
Well, you'll, you'll get good work from me, but.
Well, you know, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for second best, okay? So what I'm gathering is basically, it's information that you haven't really had enough time to go through this.
No, actually, I have.
You have? Okay.
Yes. But why I say it's not my best work is because I'd like to present some things tonight to you in public, because to explain those in my written report, you would be scratching your head, I believe. Although, Mr. Chairman, I'm not certain. You seem to have a handle on this, but I always attempt to make things as simple as possible for boards to understand.
That's good for me.
Okay? So let me begin, if you don't mind, and if you would, I'm going to. If you look at my report, it's dated September eighth of this year. I assume you have that report.
Correct.
Okay. And the application that you're going to be looking at is the independent radio frequency report regarding this facility dated September sixth of this year.
Some of them are just getting mine. Let's, let's get the report. It's in, it's.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's in here in the back. I'm not sure.
No, 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 that, that's, no, we're looking for his report, right?
No, no.
We got that. Don't we have that?
Yeah.
Oh, this is, this is, this is a new one.
It's the same report.
Same report you gave us, right?
Six more, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
New reports, I don't have to do it twice.
No.
Okay, so this, this one replaces the one that we got, Mr. Correct. Okay. We throw that one out, put this one.
We all on the same page on the report?
Um, I.
No, what they're looking for is.
We're looking at your report right now.
We're looking at your report.
September eighth.
Yeah.
And I'm.
It's in the pack.
It's in the, in this, in this packet?
It's in there somewhere.
I'm going to.
This is what you're looking for.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Well, she made copies. Tara made copies. Did everybody have it? Got a copy for? No, no, you're not, this is, he's going to go through.
This is no good no more.
That's still good no more, no.
It's like, it's a lot.
Got a new one. This is, this is Mr. Aguirre's report that we're going over.
Okay, I have it.
You have it?
Yeah, but I don't know where it's in here.
Okay.
All right, so you're all going to be looking at the independent report done by Verizon that's dated September sixth. Is that correct?
Uh.
That's the thick report.
No, it's like in the middle of that.
That's out tonight.
I think that she just handed out tonight.
That's the new one.
There's so much paper on this.
This was prepared by Pure Con Solutions, is that what?
Correct, yes.
Okay. This is the new one that you just got. Money. So we're going to need two pieces. You got his report, you're going to need the new report that you just got.
Here's the new report, okay.
Okay.
Okay. We're on the same page.
All right. The, the, the second paragraph on the first page discusses my initial review and issues that I found with the report, and I comment that Attorney Guardioso agreed to provide the secondary report. So we can begin second page of my report, where I note that it's the second submission of September ninth, I received on September ninth, that I'm addressing here. So if you'd address your attention to Exhibit A-one in that report, and that exhibit is entitled, "Existing Verizon Wireless, 700 MHz LTE In-Build Suburban Coverage." Up in the upper left-hand corner, it's tough to find the, the A-one.
Yeah.
Usually it has a staple going through it.
Is that A-one?
You're going to have to take the clip off, because it's up at the top.
So you have that one, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And then, right behind it is Exhibit A-two, which is, "Existing Verizon Wireless, 700 MHz LTE In-Vehicle Coverage with McKeel's Corners," once again. So in other words, that's the way their system is at this instant, because they're operating just with McKeel's Corners. They have the Fontstock site, the Northern Highlands site, as well as the West Point site, and the, which really don't do anything to this area. The first comment that I have in the report, if you look at Exhibit A-one, you will see that, now this is in building coverage. Now Verizon Wireless requires a stronger signal, is their design goal, when someone is inside a building. And they base that on the fact that they have data that demonstrates that the signal that's on the street outside gets attenuated. In other words, it gets reduced by going through the walls of this building, or a home, or somewhere else. So they have that signal level, ten decibels higher. Now, a decibel is a logarithmic ratio between two powers. So if something is ten dB higher, it's ten times stronger. Now, here's the confusing part that I've got to help you with. These are negative numbers, so they're backwards. So minus ninety-five dBm is stronger than minus one hundred and five dBm, because they're negative numbers. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So the in-building coverage is minus ninety-five dBm. Ten dB weaker outside or in a vehicle, it's minus one hundred and five dBm. So it's ten times weaker. And that's what they designed their system for. So assuming that their system has fixed transmitters at the sites here, because the radio frequency energy deteriorates over time, if you're closer to the tower, of course, you have a stronger signal. If you're further away, you have a weaker signal. So what you're seeing on Exhibit A-one is the existing in-building coverage. Now you'll note that along Route three oh one, there are what can be identified as significant gaps in coverage. You can see Route three oh one. It's not covered up by the green, so that means that someone in a building, according to this presentation, along Route three oh one, would not have sufficient signal to have his cellphone work. And also, if you then follow Route nine to the south, after the intersection of three oh one, you'll also see that, once again, no in-building coverage in these areas. And this was all specified in this report that was prepared for them. He went through many, many, many other roads, but quite frankly, the ones that are heavily traveled here would be three oh one and nine. He can give me a lot of other ones, but, so my, my opinion here is that this gap, this document demonstrates a gap in coverage for in-building coverage. Now look at Exhibit A-two. Remember, that signal is ten times weaker. So what does that look like? There aren't any gaps, are there? So if you're in a vehicle, no matter where you go, east to west on Route three oh one, north to south on Route nine, just about anywhere, they have seamless coverage.
In a vehicle?
In a vehicle, or on the street. Yes, indeed. And many times, boards say that, well, you've got coverage, so why do you need this? Well, there's been a lot of law cases, and Attorney Guardioso can represent a lot of those, that they have, they have said that we need in-building coverage, because people expect to use their cell phones in buildings today. So the fact that there exists a gap of in-building coverage kind of bases their fact that they need a facility here to provide coverage, improved coverage to the area in Phillips Town.
Well, they need a facility in the area, not particularly in the spot.
Uh, that's correct, yes. I just said.
It could be anywhere in this area.
In the area. You bet. Yep. Now remember, this is.
It could be across the street.
Excuse me?
It could be across the street, at Lane Gate Road.
It could be.
Okay.
Two miles away.
All right.
If, if the site were located at the proper elevation, and also in conjunction with the other sites, okay?
Right. My, my question to being, of course, I know it was a question about Lane Gate Road, which is across the street, which is a town, Phil, would that suffice?
We'll get to that one.
Okay, great.
It's later on.
Okay.
Okay. All right. If you take a look at Exhibit A-five. So what is A-five? That's actual drive test. It's called scan drive tests, where their system performance people drive around in a vehicle, and they have a receiver with an antenna, and a device that records the signal strength, and it also has a GPS in it, so it takes all those data points, and it puts them on the roads that the vehicle is driving on. Now, why are they doing this? Well, they're doing it for a very good reason, because I wouldn't accept it without it, because the other presentations you saw were calculated coverages. They were done by a computer, based upon a formula of how radio signals get weaker, how high the tower is, how many watts they're transmitting with, what the terrain is like. All of these things go into this, like a flight simulator, and it comes up with something that's supposed to be what the coverage is. But there's nothing like a real-world demonstration that they're accurate. So if you take a look at Exhibit A-five, and now I have you go back to A-one and A-two, if you don't mind. Remember, A-one is in green, and that's in in-building coverage.
Right, right.
So take a look at this, and look along three oh one.
Right.
Now, is the coverage, does the coverage appear to be better along three oh one in the drive test than it does in the calculated test? Remember, green is good. Green's in building, and yellow's in vehicle.
No, the driving looks better.
The drive test looks better.
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah.
Yes, it does. But it also highlights areas. I mean, let's take a look over in the corner by Fontstock, just along Route three oh one there. Do you see that total gap of in-building coverage?
Yeah.
And then if you look at the drive test, right in that same area, it's yellow, which means in-vehicle coverage, means there's no in-building coverage. So that's not bad. When you get over to areas, if you go south on, what is that road? Healy Road, I guess it is. And if you follow that down in the drive test, you'll see it's all in yellow. And if you look on their propagation map, it's, most of it is in yellow. Some, most of it has no, no color, so it's just green. So my opinion there was, while not perfect, the drive tests give you some comfort in believing that anything you're going to see from now on, any calculated coverage plot of anything they present to you, is a relatively accurate prediction of what their system coverage is.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, is this, I have this question. Are these done with the theory that the McKeel Tower is going to be eliminated, or McKeel, McKeel Tower is in place?
McKeel's Corners is going away.
Going away. Okay. If McKeel Corners stayed, and this tower didn't go in.
You'd have, you'd have two issues with that. You'd have a significant duplication of coverage, because the sites are relatively close together. I've, I've located, by the way, McKeel's coverage is a tree pole. It's a hundred-foot tree pole just north of three oh one, almost at the intersection of nine. And if you look on Google Maps or Bing Maps, there it is. And then if you look at that distance between it and the proposed site, it really isn't that far away. So we have an interference issue with two sites, and when two sites are close together, then we get duplicative coverage. So we're kind of wasting this whole thing, that we're covering the same area twice.
That would put too many cell towers.
Too many, yeah, yeah. But we'll get back to this question of, well, why can't you use that, and we'll talk about that in a little while, okay? So now, let's look at Exhibits B-one through B-four. Now, this gets to your question about, well, what happens if McKeel's Corners goes away?
I didn't get one with exhibit markers. The one they just sent out?
Got them?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at B-one, that's once again the in-building coverage without the McKeel's Corners. And if you were to compare that to A-one, you'd see that A-one with McKeel's Corners does provide some coverage along three oh one. Without it, there's absolutely no coverage. So it does do something. It does do something, but yet it doesn't do anything down Route nine to the south of nine. B-two is the in-vehicle coverage. And once again, that's not bad at all. I would be hard-pressed to call the areas that you see there, those little green areas underneath three oh one and nine, as gaps in coverage, because there's a certain precision to all of this. And I'd say, it's really pretty good without McKeel's Corner. Yeah.
Would it be okay without Vineyard Road, and McKeel's Corner staying there?
Excuse me?
Would it be okay if McKeel's Corner stayed there and Vineyard Road wasn't?
Well.
Oh, that's later on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm jumping a page. Go ahead.
I have to be careful I don't get ahead of myself here, or I'm going to. I have to be careful I don't get ahead of myself here or I'm going to get confused, okay?
Don't get confused.
And I confuse easily.
You're the expert. Don't get confused.
Yeah, that's what they say, right? Yeah. Okay. One of the elephants in the room here, so to speak, is that they operate two systems in the area. They operate a 700 megahertz system, the LTE system, which is really, really, really good coverage. The lower frequencies cover very well. And they operate a system at 2100 megahertz, which is also LTE, which doesn't cover as well. The frequencies are higher, the wavelengths are shorter, and it's not as robust. Tree leaves slow it down, buildings slow it down even more. It doesn't propagate very well, but they have a lot of spectrum there, so they can handle a lot of capacity. They can handle all these coverages, all these customers with unlimited service, so they do like the 21 megahertz. But it has rotten coverage. As you can look at B3, they basically have no 2100 megahertz coverage in this area. I mean, that's more than a gap. That's just a dearth of coverage. And even Exhibit B4, if you take a look at that, their in-vehicle coverage is pretty bad, too. So I don't know why they included that, just to show that they really don't have anything, but they don't have any coverage at all. In my report, by the way, I skip over Exhibits F1. And I heard you say something tonight about you didn't want to talk about Nelsonville. Well, neither did I because that's not part of this application.
Well, yeah, I mean, they have their own zoning board and their own-
Right. So anything that deals with Nelsonville, which are the Fs Exhibits, I just ignored because I think I've been retained by Nelsonville also to do that application. And I'll do that application when I'm standing before a Nelsonville board.
Sounds good.
I think it doesn't mean anything to you.
No.
At this point, it doesn't.
Well, I cooperate them in any way, but they have their own board and they have their own, you know, zoning board, so there's no way, you know.
Okay. So now let's go to, if I haven't lost them here, bear with me. We are now going to go to the C Exhibits.
C, okay. Hey, at least we don't have to wear.
And I have a special little folder for the C Exhibits because I did something special there to help you guys out in understanding. Remember, I'm not a planner and I don't talk about, is this the right kind of pole to have or the antenna's too close, too far out? I'm not a planner. I'm the engineer here.
I'm not looking for that.
So one of the things I look at is, okay, so the zone is 195 and they've come in and asked for 180. Wow, that's pretty tall. So I asked for coverage at various heights, and I think they did that also, we refined it a little bit, from the site. So address your attention now to Exhibit C2. And if you can, at the same time, get out Exhibit C2A.
C2A.
And by the way, they're backwards. C2A is the first one you should look at. C2 is the second one you should look at.
C2A and C2.
Is it C2?
I got C2A.
Yeah, you don't-
It's before C2.
Oh, is then it must be?
None.
Oh, okay.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
Even to us.
Okay, so what is, what is C2A? C2A is the coverage provided by this site, the proposed site, 700 megahertz at 150 feet, I mean, 180 feet. That's where they're applying, okay? Now, I'd like you to take a look at D2A.
Okay.
Now, this is the in-vehicle coverage. Now, if we had transparencies and an overhead projector, it would be quite easy, but sometimes what I do is I take a strong light and I do this. I look up against the light or I hold them side by side and I look at different points. So I'm going to let you do the same thing while you have, when you have C2 in your right hand and D2A in your left hand. Look at those and see if you see any difference. Look at a road, for example. Pick a spot along a road or around a road.
I'm not good at tests, okay? So, you know, tell me what we're looking at, okay?
Well, what you're looking at is the coverage at 180 and 150. And what I'm trying to demonstrate here is that I, as an engineer, see no significant difference in coverage at 180 and 150. But you're the board, you have to look at that and make that decision, too.
So you're telling us that a 150 tower would suffice?
Well, wait, I'm not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to go ahead.
Because, take a look at Exhibit E2A. And pay particular attention, remember where their gaps were in the original? And we'll get to that in just a minute. We're going to get to the composite. The gaps were along 301 and 9. So now you're looking at the coverage at 120 feet. That's E2A versus C2A.
Okay.
I don't see E2A. I see E2, but I don't see E2A.
Remember, the As are before the Twos.
Okay, wait, I'm, let me get it. I'm at F, though. I got, I got E4 and then it goes, oh, let's see, maybe.
I can let you look at mine, if you'd like.
I'll look at this.
Let's see if we can-
Okay.
Let me see if we can dumb this down for me, okay? Asking for 180-foot tower, would a shorter, would a smaller tower suffice? Would that suit their needs, in your opinion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. What size would be the same, would fit the needs?
We really have to look at one last set of plots that, I thought it was important for your board to see what they were individually. And I specifically asked for them individually because, as I said, if you take the time later and look along the road, or if you look at Exhibits C2, D2, you have those, right?
Yeah.
And that's, maybe that's going to be a lot easier for you. Look at C2, D2, and E2.
C2.
E2 and D2.
E2. And B2, right?
Mm-hmm. C2, D2, E2.
D2, B2, E2.
D2, R2.
Okay, go ahead.
Good. This is the in-vehicle coverage.
Okay.
And I see absolutely no difference in these. So it, remember, they already have great coverage, so it doesn't matter to the in-vehicle. We have to concentrate on the in-building. Okay. Finally, we can go and look at some more. We can look at the C4As, D4As, E4As. That's 2100. As you, as I already pointed out, there's a dearth of coverage at 2100 and this site doesn't help it that much either. We're primarily looking at their 700 megahertz coverage. But if you look carefully, though, if you do want, and you're off time, I'm not going to take up your time at the meeting tonight. If you compared the C4A to the D4A to the E4A, which is in-vehicle 2100, you'd see once again, there's very, very little difference between them. And as a result of that, remember I told you you can believe these because they did the drive tests?
Right.
It's my opinion that 180 feet hasn't been justified. But to finally get to that, let's look at, let's go back to where we were in the in-vehicle and let's go to, we're going to look at the composite coverage now. The composite coverage is the coverage from the system that exists today versus this. And I am actively searching for that. Hang on. Okay. Let's look at Now, what this is, is their existing coverage without McKeel's Corners, overlaid in blue, the coverage provided by this site at 180, 150, and 120. And once again, this is really important, if you look at this, because the existing coverage is there and now you can see what the new coverage provided by this site would be. And my opinion remains the same, that there's not a heck of a lot of difference between 180 and 150. 120 changes a little bit more, but clearly no difference between 180 and 150.
Okay.
And if we do it for the 700 megahertz, which would be E1, E3, and D3 and E3, you'd see the same thing. It follows that, from my opinion on this, is that the 180 has not been totally justified. 150 appears to serve their needs. But the only caveat there is, is that I heard tonight that with 180, the fourth carrier would be in the trees. And if your ordinance requires that it hold four carriers by having-
No, it doesn't require it holds four carriers.
Great, okay. So then you can have any height you'd like because Verizon is the applicant. Oh, I'd like to point out something else, too. And, you know, I'm not an attorney.
Well, what do you mean, I want to go about any height you like? I mean, you said, you said 150 would suffice.
Well, 150, 160, 170.
Oh, I see. Okay, so 150 would be acceptable.
It would be acceptable.
Okay, that's-
But since we have no evidence for 140, which the model would have a difficult time showing, I'm not going to give you an opinion on 140.
Okay.
I will give you an opinion on 150, but I said pick one, anyone in between 150 and 180.
Okay, so 150 would suffice.
In my opinion, it does.
In your opinion. Well, that's what we're paying you for. Okay.
It doesn't mean it's right, though, okay?
Well, it doesn't mean it is. That's what we're paying you for. Okay, your opinion. Okay.
All right. The issue here is that, oh, I had, I wanted to point something out to you.
Sure.
As I said, I'm not an attorney. I play one on TV.
No, I'm not an attorney.
Mr. Gordioso said something about each subsequent carrier would have to come back to your board to get their facility approved, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. FCC rule-
Not what I said.
What'd you say?
I said we'd have to come back to the municipality.
Right. And all they'd have to do, here's, here's the kicker about that. 1.40001 of the FCC rules as a result of Mid Class Tax Relief Act of 2012. If there's an existing approved facility and there's a carrier on it, another carrier can go on it without planning or zoning approval, as long as it does not increase the height of the tower by more than 100 feet or have an appearance come out more than 6 feet, 20 feet.
Okay.
Bingo. So remember that when you approve a tower, it will be approved for as many carriers it can hold. Now, that's a good thing, I think, but maybe for you, it's a bad thing because you'd like to review every one, but you lose that control once the tower is built.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the purpose of having a tower be 180 feet as opposed to 150 feet high, since there's no, there's no apparent difference in Verizon coverage, is the purpose of that to allow new carriers to also rent from Verizon on this tower?
Well, they won't rent from Verizon. They'll rent from Homeland Towers.
Oh, okay.
And Homeland's Towers business is to rent tower space to carriers.
So is, is that, is that the advantage of having the higher tower to allow more carriers to be on it?
In my opinion, it is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question also? Like I said, out of hand, that a DAS system or microcells wouldn't work for here. Can he take a look at that at some point?
Yeah, I've, I looked at the report and as I said, it's not in my report because of the time to do that. We can discuss that tonight if you'd like to. But let me go through this and then if you'd like to do that later, I certainly can address it with you, all right? All right. I don't want to take up your whole evening, but I wanted to be thorough.
No, no, I don't want to do that either. Okay, I'm just trying to get to, trying to get to basics here, okay? Well, you're saying that 150, in your opinion, 150's height would suffice, the same as the 180. Am I correct? The 150 is the same as the 180.
In looking at these, I can see an insignificant difference, that any difference would be a function of the accuracy of this presentation. Remember, the drive test didn't agree perfectly with the calculated?
Correct.
So there's some uncertainty there.
Right.
So whenever you see one of these, you have to take it with it. Now, the one thing that many municipalities do when push comes to shove on this, the applicant does a continuous wave drive test. So they set up a crane and they have the antenna at 180 feet. So this is real world now. And they drive around and they measure the signal. Then they lower the antenna down to 150 feet. They drive around and they measure the signal. And then they lower it down to 120 feet and they drive around and measure the signal. The continuous wave drive test is nearly the gold standard because it's just like a cell tower, except it's being held up by a crane. So that way, you can say without any question whatsoever, what is the minimum height required to serve the area that they need to be served. But I haven't asked for that here. Your board hasn't asked for that. I just mentioned it to you.
I haven't asked for it yet.
Why don't we talk about, I think I've worn these out now on the alternate heights.
Yeah, I think I did.
Okay, fine. Why don't we look at Exhibit G, okay?
Sure.
And the Exhibit G's talk about the Lane Gate Road site, which is the former landfill. So why don't you turn your attention to Exhibit G? And let's just take a look at, to move things along, we'll just look at the 700 megahertz from Exhibit B. So that would be-
I guess, I guess what I'm looking for here, I, this is a complete review. I understand that, okay? There's a lot of things we truly don't understand about it. I don't think anybody can sit here and say that they understand it completely. You've explained it. We're looking for pretty much like, like this height. You're saying the height, 150 is okay, they don't need a 180, okay? We're looking at Lane Gate Road. In your professional opinion, after studying all this, is Lane Gate Road an acceptable site? Without going through all the numbers.
Just remember, part of my job is to create a record.
Correct.
As in the case of East Fishkill.
Okay.
I created a record so that when it went to court, they could make a decision based on that.
Right.
Okay? That's my job. I'm not just going to say, yep, 150, no prob. No, I have to create, and that's why I'm going through this with you, and that's my, my report deals with these specific issues.
A lot of it, we don't understand, okay?
I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure that some of it is confusing. So I guess, what I'm trying to say is that I've got the opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said 150, there's no difference between 150 and 180 at this location.
In my opinion, I saw no difference between 150 and 180. No, no significant difference because they're calculated coverage plots.
Okay. Now, I know as far as the Lane Gate Road, how could you make it less lengthy?
Well, I'll make it really simple.
Sure.
Okay. The big deal with Lane Gate is he tests it at 180 and he does the alternate heights, but the ground elevation at Lane Gate is significantly lower. And remember, these sites propagate by how high they are above average terrain.
Correct.
So if you're on a hilltop over a valley and you're at 500 feet, you're going to see the entire valley. If you're on a hilltop that's at 100 feet and you're on there, you're not going to see the entire valley because these signals propagate in the line of sight. So unfortunately for Lane Gate, there is something good about Lane Gate, I have to say, though. From a design point of view, you know, one of these systems has to be designed to certain criteria. And one of them is called a regular reuse grid, where the sites are spaced around the existing sites. So if you look at B1, I'm sorry, G1, you'll see where the Glanesgate site is. Look at the distance from that site to Nelsonville and then look at that distance from, to Fontstock. Compared to Phillips Town, which, remember I talked about having sites too close together?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, that's the one downside to Phillips Town. It's very close to Fontstock, but there's not a lot of, not a lot of overlap, but still from that point of view, it's very nice. very nice. But the fact is, is the terrain's much lower, at 180, 150, 120, it doesn't provide the same level of coverage, because it doesn't see as far.
Okay.
Now, then we went to the McKeel's Corners site, and that site's the 100-foot monopole, and they tested that at 110 and 120. And those are going to be in Exhibits if you want to open to them, or if not, it's up to you.
Right. Well, I guess, they're going to abandon McKeel's Corners.
Right, but one of the considerations is, why can't they do something to that site to use it? Why throw it out? It's an existing approved site.
Can they do something to it?
Right, and so what they did is, they tested it at 120 and 130. And once again, the ground elevation in McKeel's site is significantly lower than the proposed site in Phillips Town. And it's also further north, where the gaps are on Route 9, going south. So, as a result of that, if you look at the propagations for that, it's not as good. I mean, I was hoping that that would be the one, well, just fix that site, because it already exists, but that's not going to work in this case.
Okay.
So, I think that wraps up everything that you may have thought was important in this report. Let me just look at my-
Can I just ask a follow-up on McKeel's? Just for clarification, if it was higher than it is?
Well, thank you for asking that, because, uh, once again, I'm not a zoning guy, I'm not the town engineer, I'm not a planner. Uh, just for fun, I would have tested it 180, because that would have been some other kind of variance, a height variance, and I don't know what that's called, but they only tested it what the ordinance permitted it to, which was 120. But they did give it a kiss and do 130, just for fun. But it didn't work.
Yes, I guess the audience, McKeel's Corners, is that it can't be any higher than that?
And, and by the way, that's going to be in, uh, that's going to be Exhibits A, 1A, A, 2A, A, 3A, that'll be the, uh, the penultimate paragraph of my report to your board. You will see that, that's where I outlined, so in your spare time, if you'd like to look at that, you'll see what I'm talking about there. That, that indeed, it just doesn't, it just doesn't do it.
You're saying that it may be worthwhile to study McKeel's at a higher elevation, even recognizing that a variance might be required?
You know, that's, that's, I mean, it's kind of beyond my pay grade, but sure, I mean, if you guys would approve 180 feet there-
Oh, well, that's, yeah.
Why not try it?
That's not our, that's not our-
McKeel's Corners, is that under our jurisdiction?
I don't think so.
I think, I think, I think it's 200 feet.
Where, um, Langate is-
Is it?
Where there's other towers.
Oh, that's about the same, it's a significant lower elevation. If you look at these maps, they're done on USGS topographic maps, and they have the, the elevations listed. And I looked at that, no, there's a big difference.
Yeah, 'cause I look up at it, and I'm, I'm almost parallel to where that-
You look up at what?
I look up at, uh, the, the landfill, from my property, which is across where the tower is.
And maybe you'd look up at the Phillips Town site, too, I don't know.
Hmm?
I mean, the site they proposed.
Okay. So, I, I, I'm not going to take any questions right now, from, from that, okay?
Let's see, uh, just-
Go ahead.
We had a DAS question. Do you want to talk about that?
Oh, DAS.
I can wait for the public hearing, give you some more time to, to do it.
Sure.
All right, we'll do it at the public hearing then.
Okay.
Okay. As far as McKeel's Corners, I don't know, you know, that's, that's not under jurisdiction, I don't believe, McKeel's Corners? Who would that be under?
It's in Phillips.
It's in Phillips Town, if the McKeel's Corners one, that would be under our jurisdiction? So, well, I guess, would be, it would be a, would that be feasible to you, Homeland Towers? Let me, or Mr. Gordioso?
We, we looked at it, so the-
Let's say-
The existing facility is 100 feet.
Okay.
We looked at it.
Let's see, like you said, if, if we could make that higher, we wouldn't have to put this cell tower here, I guess, that's my question.
Yeah, but we looked at that, and it's not feasible even higher. We looked at it, we looked at it at the height limit, which is 110 feet in that zone, and we even went up to 130 feet, and it still did not provide the coverage in the area. So, we did look at it even higher, and requiring a height variance, which the proposed application does not.
Well, but you didn't look at a 180. Did you look at a 180?
No, because the, first of all, there'd be no way to extend that existing tower to 180 feet.
We could replace it.
Well, that would, that, that's very speculative, say, replace it, but we looked at what I think the code allows, which is 110 feet, and we even took a 20 feet above that. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a requirement legally to say that you have to be able to go for, in this case, it would be, you know, even if it did work at 180 feet, it would be a 70-foot height variance. It's just not, that's just not legally reasonable.
Okay. Uh, just two more things before I leave you tonight, or leave this stage. I heard something about a previous alternate site analysis of May, someone said that May was at March, I don't recall. I was not a party to that, so I don't know what other alternate sites you looked at. I just looked at the two reports that I got.
Okay.
And the only other thing I'll comment on is, you brought up something about the height of, or the distance to a home, considering the RF emissions. You, you are aware that your board cannot consider radio frequency emissions in making a determination whether to approve a site or not, it's federally preempted. So, it's nice to get that report, I look at it, I know what it, yep, you betcha, but you can't consider it, but when I did look at it anyway, at 500 feet, it was still a yawn, there's no problem, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, where are we here? Let's track. Um, well, I guess, you know, again, wait, I'm going to, I'm going to have a few people speak, I guess, there's some people here. I know you're looking, your goal is to have a public hearing, and I understand that, believe me, I, I would want to get a personal with also, okay, I'm with you. But my goal is to make sure the board has all the information they need to make that decision, okay? So, uh, at this point in time, the question was raised about the fire department, I realize that was just thrown at you tonight, and you're going to have to have time to talk to your applicant about that. So, and as far as the other secret, we haven't gone over, uh, the long form.
Right, yeah, but what I've suggested this evening is, is merely to initiate the secret process.
Okay.
I mean, during that period, you can be looking at the environmental documents, but just to be able to establish lead agency, which is necessary before a determination of significance can be made.
I have to cut that mic a little bit.
Before a determination of significance can be made, you have to establish who the lead agency will be.
Well, we've already done that, right?
Well, you've started your intent.
Right, started our intent, okay.
There's no harm that you haven't looked in detail at the environmental documents yet.
All right, so our next meeting, October 2nd, what, are we, would you suggest to go over the secret, the long form at that time?
If, if you're self-prepared, again, the, uh, once the referrals are made, which will happen immediately subsequent to tonight, um, the other boards have 30 days to respond. So, this Conservation Board may respond within, uh-
Right.
-a shorter period, if you're looking at the October meeting, but-
Right.
They're not obligated to, but you could at least have reviewed the document on your own.
Right. I don't think anybody wants to touch it, uh, of the boards, you know, at this point in time, that would be like the Conservation Board?
Oh, yeah, I don't anticipate that the Conservation Board's going to object to your intention to be lead.
No, I know, so, we'll stay with that. I, I like to, you know, try and get everything together at next meeting, so we could have all the information we need, then set a public hearing. That's my plan, that public hearing would be for, let's say, November.
That's certainly your decision to make.
Right.
Does, I, does, uh, does anyone disagree with me? Has anybody set to, set a public hearing? Do you have enough information this time?
Not at all.
This one's reasonable, I think.
Okay, so, our plan is to, uh, go over the secret, the long form at next meeting, okay? Get an answer back from Homeland Towers about the fire department, okay?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm being told by your secretary that the, uh, we discussed the need for a referral to county planning earlier tonight.
Right.
But her notes didn't pick up the actual referral being made. Could you do that for the record, just so she picks it up in a minute? Thank you.
Going to make a motion for a referral to the county for this project?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. And so, that's what we'll do in October 2nd, go through the secret, long form, okay? Uh, we'll have the answer from Homeland Towers, where they stand with the fire department, okay? And at that point in time, what else do you think we would need? We have the liability, we have everything else like that, we have the, what do you think we would need besides that, I guess is my question to you.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's some statutory administrative things that are covered in my technical memorandum to the board, which, which obviously the applicant will be responding to.
Okay.
And you've got the report from the RF engineers, so.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll go through that October, October meeting, and then if we can get everything together, we will set up a public hearing for, that would be for November.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay? Now, anybody in the audience would want to speak a few, few minutes, that's fine. Yes, and that long, I'm, I'm, it's not long, but, you know, come on.
One thing is, I just want, Cali Gore of Cold Spring, sorry, clarification, once this tower is approved, or once any, Mr. Gray, um, Mr. Gray, I, this is for you, really, a question, once any tower is approved, they can, at, will add 100 feet?
No.
Okay, help me understand that.
Step up. If, if you don't mind, Attorney Gordioso.
If I can just take one first crack at it, I think you made a misvote before.
I don't think so.
You said 100 feet, I think you meant 10% or 20 feet.
10% or 20 feet?
10%, 20 feet would be the, would be the height that the statute that you referred to would have to be deemed approved.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I had mentioned this before, so I apologize for bringing it up again, but the, the test for the aesthetics of, you know, in all these pictures of the, the tower in whose ever view, and when, whether it can be seen or not, in the middle of the summer, with all the trees, with all their leaves, I don't think that, that's a reasonable test. I think they should have to test it again when the leaves are down, because that's how we spend most of the year. The other thing I would like to say is that, um-
Let me ask, hold on a second, uh, Mr. Gordioso, uh, we're going to have, like I told you, October 2nd, we're going to, uh, try and finish this up, as far as to get it ready for a public hearing, and which we probably schedule a public hearing in November, sometime in November, second Monday, November. Would you be, in that period of time, would you be prepared, would you be amicable to doing another balloon test, no leaves, let's say, at the end of October, November, or not?
Um, we can certainly discuss it at October, the October meeting.
Okay, let's discuss it at October meeting, because, like I said, probably set up the public hearing for November, so that would give you some time, maybe the leaves would be down by that period of time, talk about it to your applicant, see if they're accessible to setting up another balloon test when the leaves are, are down off the trees, I guess. Thank you. Yes, sir. You can have to go up to a microphone, please, identify yourself.
Good evening, my name's Alan Jordan, Cold Spring, I live 24 White Rocks Lane. Um, I'm just trying to get, um, a better visual for, we're talking about this balloon test now, I just, I'd like to know, how big is the balloon that we're using? I'm assuming that whatever it's being floated on is, I don't know, cable, maybe, perhaps, I'm trying to understand what, what that looks like as far as size, and I'd also like to try and have a better understanding, um, what are we talking about from, uh, side to side, as far as when this monopole is up?
Are you talking about the equipment?
Yeah, the equipment, so, you know, what is it from one side to another? Is it 20 feet, is it 30 feet, is it, I, I'm-
I don't know, I guess it would depend on what type of equipment they use.
Right, so, I guess, what I'm asking is, we're floating a balloon in the air.
Correct.
And does that really give us what we're looking for, as far as-
Well, I guess it, what, what it gives you is a visual sight of where it's going to be, and how high it's going to be, and everything, and stuff like that. I don't know, be, I don't know if it would be feasible for me to ask them to float a tower type of thing, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, no, I wasn't asking for that, I was just, no, I wasn't asking for that at all, if, I didn't mean to imply that.
I understand what you're trying to say, but I don't, how many balloons are going to need, I mean, you know, they're going to-
Yeah, no, I'm just, I, I'd just like to compare.
Right.
You know, the balloon that's in the air, what is that, is that a 10-foot balloon?
What the balloon does is, is we drive around the neighborhoods in different areas, we can see the balloons, we know where that tower's going to look from.
Right.
If we can see the balloon, we know we'll see the tower from different sizes.
Right, I'm just trying to get for someone who is, uh-
Right, I understand.
1,200 feet away from this.
Right, you ask them to use a bigger balloon. We can always do that.
Again, if there's, if there's anybody that can provide me that information, as far as the equipment, just, just curious.
It's, it's all in the plans, and what, what's important to remember, the initial visual report, which we updated-
It's set for the microphones, it's, it's, please. Because, believe it or not, there's people at home that actually look at this.
The, the initial visual report that we prepared and put in the record, and we updated recently, was used, uh, used computer modeling at a time with photographs with no leaves on the trees. So, we've already done that, number one. Number two, we updated that, and then we also performed the balloon test, and as we had somewhat, um, warned when we were doing the balloon test, is that it's a heavily wooded area, and that to get a balloon up to the location, uh, is very difficult. So, what we did is, we took photographs of the balloon, and as you can tell, the balloon, because of the wind drift, is not always in the exact location. So, what we did, again, we used the computer modeling, and in all of those photographs, we showed where actually the top of the tower would be. Then on top of all of that, what we did is, we used computer modeling to show what the actual dimensions of the tower would be, because Mr. Lim's correct, the balloon is really only a reference point. The problem is, as a reference point, it's not always 100% accurate, because just of the trees and the wind. So, what we did is, we used computer modeling to show in the different photographs, exactly what the tower would look like, and in this case, we even did it with a full build-out, which is not proposed as part of this application. So, that's all already in the visual analysis.
All right. Uh, anybody else? Yes, miss? I'm willing to move it.
I'm Ellen Bursting from-
I'm sorry?
Ellen Bursting from Cold Spring, I just had a question, is it unreasonable to ask about this crane test, to see whether it really could be even lower than 150 feet?
Um, test to see if it could be lower than 150 feet?
Yeah, the gentleman mentioned that they could have a crane-
Oh, you mean with the car?
And, yeah, and see, to, to see if it really could be even lower than that.
We'll, we will, based on Mr. Gray's, or based on our-
I'll go over to my phone, please. I know it's just a problem.
We will evaluate the opportunity of lowering the tower.
Okay, will you have an answer by October 2nd for us on that, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, on October, so, while I'm looking for Mr. Gordioso, October 7th is to have everything together. Yes, go ahead.
And then, just as a follow-up to that, would there really be no consideration of something higher at the existing site? I know maybe 180 feet is too big a variance, but what about 170 feet at that site?
Well, they've already looked at that, I think, and, you know, they would have to pretty much take the tower down and put it up entirely, we did like a, a big variance, a 70-feet variance, yeah. We did like a big variance of 70 feet variance, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Good evening. Paul Eldridge, 100 Rockwald Road. There's been a number of reports referred to, the new application, and I think it's 500 pages, if I understood that correctly. And there was a report of 9/6 and a report of 9/8, I believe, that was referred to. I think one of them was passed out this evening. Are they all available for us to review? Are they online?
I don't think they're online. I think they're in town, they're in the building department, but I... To put this online, I don't know if we have anybody who could put 600, 500, 600 pages online.
Or make it available electronically? You know, an electronic file that could be shared?
A lot of it is online now.
It is, okay.
Electronic file. Hold on, let me...
That's the new submissions.
Well, that's what I was... I was hoping to see the new submission.
Let me ask our secretary.
Sure.
It is a lot of work, you know, to put all these pages online. I mean, you know, I just... They are available. You can go down to... I know it's a pain in the neck, but you can go down to the building department and review them all.
Well, could Homeland Towers make a, you know, a digital copy available?
Yeah, we did that already.
Wait, come over. I've provided that?
They've provided the PDF of everything in the application that they just turned in, which is online, if you go to the philipstown.com website.
That's the new submission.
That was the submissions that they submitted on August...
The ones you got tonight?
The ones I got tonight?
Can you give me a disc?
Okay, so they're all be online.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Can I just make a...
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I can't... I've got to let the supervisor speak. I mean, you know...
I just want to make an observation that for two years, Homeland Tower pursued the former landfill site as a viable site, and it's...
I'm at a loss myself.
No, I know, so it's less...
They came to you two years ago to see if they could use the site. Now all of a sudden, it's no good.
Right, so less than... And then, less than, you know, half a mile away, a lot of locations there probably could be looked at, but also the fact that we were accused of not, you know, not responding to that. We did meet up there and look at that site, and at that time, it was presented as a viable site. You know, I would encourage Homeland Tower to go back and look at the site again, to take a closer look, and we'd be completely amenable to that, to taking a look at that site, because in my opinion, I just don't see how, from one side of the street to the other, and I know there's difference in elevation, but that some accommodation couldn't be made there, especially after hearing the report tonight about the coverage area. So I did want to make that observation.
Let me ask Mr. Goduso, is it possible for Homeland Towers... We're looking for... I guess I'm trying to say, you can see the point, we're looking for an alternative site.
Yes.
Is it possible to take another look at Langet?
I mean, we thoroughly evaluated it, and your own consultant agreed with our evaluation that it's not a feasible standpoint, from an RF standpoint. And let me just make it perfectly clear. We said this before. We will not spend the resources of fully engineering a site until we know we have a willing landlord. And I think that the alternative site analysis that I referred to before had nothing to do with engineering. It had to do with site acquisition, and we cited all the different attempts we made to look at the property. Nevertheless, after our last discussion about a month ago, where the supervisor said the town board may be amenable, we went back and we ran the plots. We submitted them up to 180 feet. Your own consultant reviewed it. He testified to it this evening that it doesn't work from an engineering standpoint. So I'm not really sure where we're going on that, because we looked at it from an engineering standpoint.
Now, why did you approach them two years ago, if it wasn't viable? I just... You understand, from just a regular person, a model loss...
So I think I explained it before. The first thing that Homeland Towers does is they come in and they look at municipal property. They've worked with numerous municipalities throughout the region, because usually municipal property has an existing condition on it. In this case, it's a landfill. And we've done other existing landfills with other towns in the region, because they tend to be areas that are amenable to this type of facility. So our first look, when we came to the area, was, let's go look at the landfill. And Homeland Towers was not the first applicant to come look at the landfill. There were other applicants, as I mentioned before, that had come to the town and didn't have success in pursuing that location. But nevertheless, Homeland Tower looked at that as its first line of, hey, there's a municipal property and it's a landfill. So they went and looked at that property first, and after, I believe, very good faith efforts to try and obtain consent to go there, they looked elsewhere. And then the next step in the process was to look at the zoning code, look at the preferred zones. There happens to be a preferred zone right across the street on a 64-acre property that meets all the height and setback limitations. So that's the analysis that was laid out back in the May 23rd filing with the alternative site analysis from Mr. Xavier, and that's all in the record. So it's... We never said it was a feasible alternative from an engineering standpoint, because we don't do that until we know we have a willing landlord. That's when we start to spend the time and the resources to evaluate it further.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gray.
Just like to clarify one thing with respect to the landfill site. I evaluated the site that was on the maps. I did not look, with this short fuse, I didn't go to your landfill. I didn't look to see if there was higher ground there or lower ground. I know they didn't want to move the site on this property closer to the building or something. I have no idea whether that's higher or lower ground. I just, based on the information I was given, and it could be at the landfill, there's higher ground. I don't know. I evaluated on what I was given as this is the site, and I made the assumption that that's the site that everyone agreed on was the landfill site. But if there's something else at the landfill that everyone seems to think is higher, so be it, and it should be evaluated that way.
And that's a really good point.
Go ahead.
We specifically looked at the location on the landfill that was indicated to us that might be available. So we looked at the best spot on the landfill. If there's a different spot on the landfill and you have different coordinates, we'll be happy to look at them. But I can tell you this, because we went through the visual analysis, page by page, on the landfill and showing the different view sheds, coming up and down Route 9, the visibility of the landfill will be significantly greater, even at the best location that we picked. If you have a different location on the landfill, and the town wants to write us a letter and say there's a different location, and they'll make that available on reasonable terms and conditions, we'll be happy to perform another evaluation.
Right. Well, I understand what you're saying about more visibility on Route 9, but would there be less visibility to... I guess my question would be, would there be less visibility to people who are going to have to start to look at it from the deck? That's my... You understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I think if you go out there and actually look at it, I think that it'll be six of one and half a dozen of another, meaning that there'll be other locations that'll be even more visible from, at the landfill.
Right. So I guess what we're trying to say is Langet is pretty much a dead issue to you, correct?
We believe we've evaluated it, and it's not a feasible alternative.
Okay. So I guess it's, you know, even if I asked you to go out there and take a look at it, and you come back and tell me that it's a viable location, you're going to argue with it, I guess.
No, I would...
Go ahead. You know what I'm trying to say?
I don't think that's fair at all. It's not as exact as...
Oh, wait a minute. Don't get excited. Don't get excited. Let the room talk. Relax. Calm down. Calm down. Please.
You mischaracterized what I said.
Relax, take it easy. Well, you jumped up there like you're going to bite.
No, because that was a mischaracterization. I specifically said just the opposite.
Take it easy.
That if there was another alternative on the property that was available, and you thought it was a less intrusive location, and you thought it was better from an engineering standpoint, we would evaluate it.
Okay.
We don't believe that exists, but I made the offer specifically that we would continue to evaluate it.
Well, let's see, make a deal here. We think it's probably less intrusive, the board, and probably might be a better site. Are you willing to look at it? Are you willing to look at it? And the town, I know, is willing to open it.
What I'm saying is, we've already looked at it. If there's a difference...
Okay, so what are you trying to tell me?
If there's a difference...
You're up here telling me you're willing to look at it, and then you're saying you're not willing to look at it. You've got to give me an answer.
Look, my answer is this. My answer is that we were told there was one specific spot on the property that was the available location. We evaluated it, and this is despite...
What if there's another spot available?
Then... So I just got done saying, then have the town send us a letter that says, number one, the town board, that the town board as a whole is making it available under reasonable terms and conditions. Tell us exactly where it is, and we'll evaluate it.
Oh, let me ask you this one. If the town board said that you could pick out the spot, you could... If you evaluated the area, let's say the landfill, and you picked the best spot for yourself, and they agreed to it, would that be okay?
That's what we already have done. We've already done that.
You've done that? Well, now I have to ask you for the supervisor here. Please speak, Mr. Gray.
Now you've got to rush.
Yeah, now you've got to rush. Yeah, but don't yell. Don't jump up like him.
He's two years late.
Go ahead.
Two years later. We never designated a spot. So to characterize it as if we had designated a spot, that is completely false, because we are not the experts. What we did was invite Homeland Tower to the former landfill, and have them come out with some preliminary testing equipment, and at that time, it looked like it was feasible. So I don't know which site this test was taken from. I'd have to look the report, and...
Right, he's not jumping up this time.
Again, we were not the ones who designated the spot.
Right. So any spot on there would be okay with you?
Well, any spot that was... That would work... We do have limitations with the landfill cap.
Of course, you've got to be able to get in with the landfill cap.
Well, we have a cap on the landfill. We can't penetrate the cap, and this thing requires... I imagine these monopoles require quite a footing. But again, we did not designate the spot.
Okay.
We were specifically told...
You have to go to the microphone now.
I'm going to end it with this. We were specifically told not to go in the cap, to go off the cap and go into the woods, which is exactly where we picked. If there's a spot that the board and the town board are willing to make available under reasonable terms and conditions that is in writing to us, we will evaluate it and provide a report.
All right. How do we proceed now to do that? I mean, we have the supervisor here, and we have you here, we have the engineers here. Everybody seems like they're willing to do that. Would you be willing to go and look a spot that would be feasible to you?
Sure.
Sure.
But my point is, is that we have already done that, and what we've told you is the spot that's feasible...
I understand if you pick one spot.
Okay.
Okay. Was that spot good for you?
It was in a spot that we can construct it, but it was not in a spot, and the property in and of itself does not provide the necessary coverage to fill the gap.
I know I'm asking a lot from you. I understand that. But I'm just trying to get to the best conclusion here. So I guess, would it be possible for you to go back to the landfill and look for a spot that would be viable to you?
We would... I would say this, we're in a chicken and egg situation.
Okay.
Okay? If the town has a spot...
No chicken and any egg.
If the town has a spot that they would like to make available, that they think is better than the spot we already chose, we're happy...
But they can't pick the spot. You have to pick the spot. They're not experts.
But we did pick... We are the experts, and we picked the spot. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
And it tells you the spot's no good.
And... Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to belabor the thing.
I know, I'm just trying to say...
If there's a spot that someone thinks is a better spot than what we picked, that doesn't work, and that they think will work, we'll evaluate it. We have no objection to that.
Okay. Would you be willing to go with our consultant to the landfill and your engineer to look for a spot?
I think first, the town board has to say what spots it's willing to make available. And look, I'm not trying to be difficult...
No, I understand.
But we spent a considerable amount of time going through this, and quite frankly...
This is important.
And frankly, we got... Let me finish. And we got nowhere, because it wasn't made available. So I'm not going to spend the effort to pick...
You blame the town.
It's not a matter of blame. It's a matter of that these are the facts. This is how it happened, and we've documented that. Okay? So, you know, I don't want to hold out false hope that there's this magical unicorn spot on the landfill that somehow everybody overlooked and is available, and is going to solve all the problems, and it's going to be invisible when we put it there, and there's not going to be another group of neighbors. Okay? I just... I don't want to set that wrong expectation. So if between your consultant and the town board wants to look at the property, the town owns the property, and they think that there's a better spot that we should evaluate, we are happy to evaluate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. At this point in time, I guess, you want to step up to... I guess, but at this point in time, as our consultant...
The problem for me is, if you look at Exhibit H of the application, it lists the latitude and longitude of the Phillips Town proposed, Nelsonville proposed, West Point HD, West Point Barracks, Fonstock, Travis Corners, North Highlands, and McKeel's Corners. It doesn't indicate any coordinates for the landfill. I have no idea where it is. All I did is I looked at a map, and I saw the iso contour lines, and I said, yeah, it's about at 580 feet, or whatever it was. I have no idea where it is. Typically, when an applicant applies for a site, they put a peg where the tower's going to be, and then they stake out the compound... I'm sorry. The compound area. I have no idea. I mean, if it went to the landfill, I might step in the landfill or something. I don't know where it is. They must know where it is, because they proposed it, right?
We'll be happy to provide that information.
Okay.
All right. How about we do this?
Would you mark the site, then? I mean, I don't have a... An A&E guy's probably got a great GPS. We'll go together.
We'll have Homeland Towers directly when you have the section.
How about that? Homeland Towers, you and Mr. Gaynor, meet at the site, make arrangements, meet at the site, and see by next month, on October 2nd, come up with an answer. Okay? If it's good or not good, is that possible?
How about tomorrow at 12 o'clock?
Tomorrow at 12 o'clock?
Unless that wastes time.
Okay.
I'm asking your conservation board on the site tomorrow.
How's that? Is that okay?
You talk about a short fuse. I have a life, I have a bit of responsibilities, right? We offer.
Is it possible? I'm asking.
That's not reasonable. Tomorrow at 12 o'clock, is this...
It's a...
What?
Right.
14 hours from now? We don't make dates 14 hours.
Right.
This is a big decision. We offer it, okay? So if you have a better date and time, let us know. Yeah, we will. We've been at this for two years.